Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to Day Three of Budget Hearings. It's June 19th, 2019, and today we'll have our Land Use and Community Services. First, we'll start off with a presentation overview on Land Use and Community Services budget category as provided in the proposed budget, pages 227 to 229, for those of you following along at home and outlined in the memorandum of the CIO.
Good morning, Chair Coonerty, members of the board. Christina Mallory, you're a county budget manager. And so I'm going to give you an overview of the Land Use and Community Services budgets today. Here you'll see a list of the departments and agencies included in Land Use and Community Services: Agricultural Commissioner, Ag Extension, our local agency Formation Commission, Lafco, Library Fund, the Monterey Bay Air Resources District, Parks and Cultural Services, of course, planning and our housing funds, Public Works, and our Redevelopment Successor Agency. So here you'll see an overview of the total expenditures by department. There's $203 million for this upcoming fiscal year. This represents 25% of all budgeted expenditures for fiscal year 1920. It does represent an 11% decrease from the previous fiscal year, primarily from the completion of several housing projects and various other capital projects. This chart shows the share of expenditures by department and agency, and you'll notice that the Public Works is the largest share at 71%. This will give you a picture of the types of expenditures over the next two years. The largest, of course, is services and supplies, which comprises about $92 million. Salaries and benefits, $58 million, which support 414-plus positions, which is an increase of almost two positions from the previous fiscal year. Additional expenditures include $31 million and other charges, about $7 million in fixed assets, and $15 million, excuse me, in other financing. Fiscal year 2021 expenditures are estimated to decrease by approximately $31 million, primarily due to the reductions in public works projects offset by status quo increases for existing staff and programs. The Land Use and Community Services category revenues are approximately $185 million next year, or 91% of the total financing, with the General Fund and other funds making up the difference of approximately 9% to meet the expenditure needs. Land Use and Community Services finances represent 24% of the budgeted county revenues. And this chart shows the share of financing by department and agency. And you'll note that Agricultural Extension, Lafco, and the Air Resources District are not represented, as they are totally supported by the General Fund. Sure.
The redevelopment number, given that we're not selling any more bonds, we're closing down the agency, what makes up that 9% number?
Primarily, that's the actual debt service.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, Public Works is the largest share at 74%. Here you'll see the revenues over the course of the next two years. $84 million in charges for services is the largest share, $47 million in intergovernmental revenue from federal and state sources, $32 million in taxes, $23 million in other revenues, including licenses, permits, miscellaneous fees, and interest. In 2021, revenues are estimated to decrease by approximately $25 million, primarily due to the completion of public works projects offset by minor increases in charges for services and taxes. And estimates will be updated as more information is known in the following year. Here you'll see the actual General Fund contribution by department. It's approximately $9.6 million, which represents about 6% of the total General Fund net county cost, and further details are provided in each department budget. And you'll see here that Parks makes up the majority of that, 50%. Then I'd like to give you a few 1921 operational plan highlights. The Land Use and Community Services Departments contribute 51 objectives to the 1921 operational plan. Major projects include the creation of a campus master plan, completing Leo's Haven Playground at Shanna Clear Park, and updating sustainability element of the general plan, and a major collaboration to create a one-stop permitting center for county development services. While there is significant progress needed in infrastructure and deferred maintenance on much of our facilities, we want to acknowledge just a few of the accomplishments of the Land Use and Community Services this year. From new public education programs around waste management and reduction, to innovative new planning tools for increasing housing units through overlay districts, from completing the new mosquito lab, breaking ground on several high-impact community projects such as Shanna Clear Park, Leo's Haven, and the Felton Library. Our Land Use Departments continue to work to protect the health, safety, and wellness of Santa Cruz County residents. The largest of the Land Use and Community Services Departments will provide presentations on the regular agenda today, and the status quo budget proposals are included on the consent agenda for the Ag Commissioner, Ag Cooperative Extension, Lafco, the Library Fund, the Monterey Bay Air Resources District, and the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Department heads and representatives are available here today to answer any questions you may have. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much.
We have one revision, today's agenda, item 34. There's additional materials revised supplemental pages 37 and 38.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now is an opportunity for action on our consent agenda. These are items 37 through 43 on today's agenda. First, I'll ask if there are any questions by supervisors.
I just have a comment on item 39, the Library Fund. Again, I think it's proper to thank the voters for supporting libraries at the ballot box. It's allowed for rebuilding and renovating library facilities throughout the county. I look forward to the, especially for the Felton Library opening, early part of next year, and then shortly thereafter, Boulder Creek Library starting renovation right after that. And I want to thank our library director, Susan Nimitz, and our Friends of Santa Cruz Libraries groups for their efforts on behalf of our library system. They've really had a focus on it, obviously, and has made it, it's going to have a much better system in the very near future. And on the Library Fund, I see that we've added five full-time positions, and half of those are going to go to the Felton Library. That will require funding into the Library Fund balance for two years, but after that, glad to see that we'll continue with the maintenance effort that we'll get. But I think that the people of Santa Cruz County have made a bold statement, that they really appreciate their libraries and appreciate it very much for their support at the ballot box as well.
Great, thank you, and agreed. Are there any public comments on the consent agenda?
Hello, I'm Cheryl Bailey, project manager for Santa Cruz County Parks. And as you will note, that my position's being eliminated from the Parks budget. And I think there's perhaps some facts and information that...
Ma'am, I just want to, I think you're up next in item number 34.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, I was thinking that was on the consent, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay.
Hi, good morning, Board of Supervisors, community members. My name is Lori Chamberlain, and I'm the superintendent of the Live Oak School District. And I just came to speak in to support the board's decision, hopefully, to approve the permit fees for the Live Oak soccer field. This is something that's been in the works.
I'm sorry, you're up next as well.
I'm so sorry.
Yes, no problem. We'll get there, I promise. Okay. Oh, the Ag Commissioner, you are on here.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board, Juanito Alguay, Cultural Commissioner. I just want to take a minute to thank your board and the CIO's office for all their support of our agricultural programs and the Mosquito and Vector Control Division. And also, I want to thank my staff for their incredible work and commitment to provide excellent service to our community. And we look forward to continuing to provide good service, and thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your good work in our community. Okay, that concludes public comment on the consent agenda.
I have one comment.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Hi, my name is James Williams. I represent Friends of Quail Hollow, and I have two very quick items. I know you guys are going to be very busy today.
Sorry, sir, I think you're next as well. The Parks is coming up next.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're on the consent agenda. All right, so that closes public comment, and we'll bring it back to the board for deliberation action.
I move the consent agenda.
Okay, so a motion by Leopold, a second by McPherson.
And with just one brief comment regarding to the Ag Commissioner, I recognize that we talk a lot about planning in regards to cannabis, but there's a significant increase in the workload facing his department as well. And with the world of hemp coming on, I think it's something that the board's going to have to consider as we do intake funds associated with cannabis cultivation and the CBT. We're going to need to seriously look at how his staff is impacted as well, and whether we need to make adjustments to that in the coming year's budget.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Leopold, a second by McPherson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Now we're on to item number 34. This is the Parks. Consider the 2019, 2021 proposed budget for Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Services as outlined in the reference budget documents, and schedule the proposed continuing agreements list and amendments to the unified fee schedule for final approval on last-day budget hearings June 25th, 25th, 2019, as outlined in a memorandum of the Director of Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Services.
The much anticipated Parks budget, it sounds like.
Goodie bags, thank you.
And as you're getting those, I wanted to highlight that on that, it says "Love in the Hollow," so we'll be talking later about a free month in July, because it is National Parks and Recreation Month, but we'll be doing free weddings all day on July 14th at Quail Hollow. So that's why you have Love in the Hollow on that bag. And then inside it, you also have a sheet like this that will tell you about all the fun events in July that we'll be having for free, and that's also going to be talked about a little bit later. So Chairman Coonerty and fellow supervisors, thank you for having us here this morning. We'll start through our Parks Department budget for... There we go.
Page down.
Page down, okay, thank you. All right, there we go. So for the highlight, we're going to be going over, we have the overview, our grants, upcoming projects, Parks objectives, challenges and opportunities, and partnerships and special For the highlights in 1819, those are actually all supposed to be boxes that are checked, actually, so, sorry about that. Those are things we accomplished. The active net recreation software, Aldridge improvements, Shanna Clear is actually under construction. The coastal encroachment program actually implemented, and we have permits on file. Davenport Landing's actually out to bid. Hardest Oakell, Phase Two and Three are funded. Hidden Beach improvements, Measure G successfully passed, which is thank you to voters and everybody else's support on that. The new concessions, we've started to get those up and running for summer, and the Pinto pump track completed. So down at the bottom, I'm not sure, I'm going to still look. Oh, yeah, and we've added some special events for the year. Several special events, ones that we're both partnering with and sponsoring. As we look at the overall budget, the biggest impacts are going to be in regards to utilities and especially water costs. They have gone up significantly, as much as 25%. And we're also looking at the three additional positions we added as a result of Measure G. So one of those was an unfunded maintenance worker position that we had, and we funded that. We added a maintenance worker position, and then also a park and rec specialist position, program specialist. So the changes, as I started to highlight, existing staff costs, that's the biggest impact with utilities, those are the two issues that probably hit the budget the hardest. Measure G additions also, which were anticipated and compensated for with Measure G dollars. Our mid-year change in planning, which is a position that we're going to switch from project manager to a planning position, that'll save us about $100,000, almost $100,000 in the first year, and then almost $200,000 each year after that. So utilities, as we mentioned, and then internships, we're looking at expanding our internship program. We have a, we're working with Lead for America on one of those. We're working with AmeriCorps, of course, similar to internship programs, but we're really going to get down into meeting with each university that surrounds the area, even going over the hill and down into Monterey County, and develop a very solid internship program so we can look at increasing our workforce over the future. Special events, as I mentioned, we're continuing to partner and/or sponsor large special events throughout the county. Continue to do our outreach. We've increased the, we've doubled the size of our emailing list and doubled the size of our Instagram account followers and Facebook. Those are all things that we'd like to be able to get information out in a more 21st century type of way. And then the last thing, the storm repairs that we have, we're wrapping up the last of those, believe it or not. It's taken a couple of years, and you may still see some of those in the budget. So the changes for 2021, I'm sorry if I didn't highlight before, that was for 1920, this is 2021 now, keeping in mind that we're having a two-year budget. And just, if anybody catches me saying the word exciting, I just want you to know, my staff's going to make me pay $5 each time, so you guys want my own keep tally on that. I get a little overly excited about the budget, so I'm really doing my best not to use that word. So anyway, as we move forward, we're going to add a quarter of time to rec specialist position that'll be offset with increases in revenue. And then the utilities, we're going to worry about, again, they continue to skyrocket on us, and we're doing everything we can to modify the way we do business and find ways to do things in a more effective and efficient manner. Okay, so some of the increasing revenue to offset the expenditures, we already talked the coastal encroachment program, and then concession airs, those are, we're finding great success with that throughout the county, finding new ways to do concessions. We're also going to expand our rental opportunities, possibly more weddings, and looking at areas that we didn't in the past, weren't able to reserve for picnics and/or group reservations. We're looking at the potential to increase the CSA 11 revenue. It's $8.50 a parcel right now. We also are looking at park impact fees. We haven't really looked at those in over 20 years, and they need to be examined. So improve utility consumption, as we talked about, and alternative options. And then we're looking at continuing to reorganize and reclassify positions as needed. So grants, as you can see, the last couple of years, we were looking at under $1 million in grants, well under $1 million a couple of years ago, and now regularly hitting $1 million or more each year with the passage of Prop 68 and the implementation of the available grants through Prop 68. We probably will be looking at anywhere between $8 and $11 million a year for the next couple of years as potential grant opportunities, so we definitely want to jump on those. We also have contracted and will be contracting with a grant writer, and I think that's the best strategy we have for looking at that. So upcoming projects, I would normally use the word exciting here, but I'm not going to, so, I don't know. Saying the word exciting, I may have to pay $5 for that one.
I've counted three so far.
Yeah, I know, thank you. All right, so we're going to fix this budget problem right now, out of my pocket. So it is nice to see, over the last couple of years, to really have brought all these projects forward and see the fruition of our work. The Felton Nature Discovery Park, all of these will either be starting construction or become fully funded and looking at getting plans drawn up. Hardest Oakell, Sea Cliff Village Park, adding a restroom, Davenport Landing, actually replacing the restroom. Live Oak, library annex, and also some of the associated deferred maintenance issues that go along with that, which is also Simkins Family Swim Center. So we have a lot of 20-year-old problems there that we're going to be able to work on. The Farm Park, which has been a long, long time coming, very exciting to get that, oh, I got, there's another one, to get that underway. Hidden Beach, we have some improvements still to complete. We did ADA, and now we're looking at the playground. And then Quail Hollow, actually getting some repairs to the structure up there so we can keep it in tip-top shape. So looking at the county operational plan, park objectives, we did our own strategic plan, got our own operation plan together as a Parks Department, and now we're melding that with the county's over-wide operational plan, and we found six different opportunities to do that. So as you look, we really are hopeful that by June of 2021, actually, we're going to create a new rec camp for preteens and teenage youth. This is an age group that is underserved in our county and needs to be targeted and provided opportunities to attend camps where they can develop skills and self-esteem. So also, we're hoping by 2020 that Parks will complete the construction of Shanna Clear Park Phase One and Leo's Haven Playground project. I think that's very realistic at this point, considering that I saw the restroom going down the street today, actually. So that's really nice, not exciting. So, and then 2021, we're going to complete the swim center deferred maintenance issues that we talked about. There's a lot of over $1 million at least in deferred maintenance issues that we need to take care of there, so definitely on our radar and something we're moving towards. As we look towards December of 2020, we also want to develop an internship program that gives the students the opportunity to learn our park functions, not just the typical park functions, but there are so many other opportunities for people to come and learn about parks and government in general. So we're really, as I said, looking forward to expanding our opportunities with local universities. And by 2020, in June of 2020, we're also going to work on our metrics for the maintenance section. In other words, we currently have four reporting locations, five reporting locations, and where people go, depending on traffic and how they get to different parks, as they report to those occasions, can be very challenging, as we all know, with traffic in the area and just schools and all that sort of thing. And so we're looking at how they can more efficiently and effectively get their work done and navigate some of the obstacles that are there every day, in addition to how they can improve efficiencies in the workflow all day. So this was also a primo project, really looking forward to seeing how that comes out. And then we're also going to work on improving our community outreach. This is something that is very important to me and something I've wanted to do from day one, and that is regular surveys of our park users in the community so we know that we're hitting the marks we need to with them, that we're delivering the services that they're asking for. And we hope to increase our social media followers by 25% by June 2020 as well. Some of the things we're looking at that are both challenges and potential opportunities, because as we all know, a challenge is always an opportunity. The deferred maintenance in our Parks Department, as we are aware and I've talked about in the past, there were years and years where there was no maintenance being done, no deferred maintenance being handled, and so catching up on that is an exponential number oftentimes, and we still are looking at how we approach that and how we are able to accomplish some of those issues around the deferred maintenance homelessness. We all know that is a huge problem for our county, our region, and our state, and really, to some degree, our country. So we are working diligently with all the other Parks Departments and often with other agencies to see how we can improve the opportunities for the homeless that we do have living in our parks and/or that we interact with. We've also trained our staff on how to interact with them. We'll continue to do that. Hazardous tree removal, always an issue for a Parks Department, but we did have a significant event that happened down at Moran Lake, and I think that is a focal point for us, and I've got pressure from the Planning Commission as well to address that. Is, often happens, the natural resource protection collides with our urban interface, and so we have an issue where we have butterfly habitat and trees that have a potential hazard. So I think that's an example of things throughout our county park system where we do have trees like that. And so sometimes, one tree alone can be $100,000 to deal with and removal and disposal, so just a challenge to look forward to and how we get there. Youth programming, we don't have enough of it, and we'd like to have the opportunity to provide more, and how we come up with funding and how we come up with positions to do that is a challenge, but our youth are underserved when it comes to recreation in the unincorporated areas. The park impact fee study, bringing that to this board and getting approval and making sure that we are balancing a delicate process is going to be a challenge, but it's also a great opportunity for us to get up to speed to where we need to be. CSA 11 assessment increase, that's definitely a potential opportunity for us to bring in more revenue to get us off of the dependency we have on the General Fund. Right now, about 40% of our budget is General Fund, and as you saw the slide in the land, in Land Use Department area, we are 50% of that, we'd like to get that down. And then park master plan and development, a lot of times, Parks Departments start with a master plan, and then they build the parks. We're kind of doing that in reverse, but we'd like to see that we get at least a master plan down on paper, and we can move from there. So some of the partnership highlights, this is only a small portion of all the folks that we are partnered with at this point, and some of them are here today, I saw in the audience, and I definitely wish I could highlight all of them. One in particular I wanted to mention was the Santa Cruz Mountain Stewardship Network, which is made up of, at this point, 29 different organizations, most of them government agencies, some private entities like Big Creek Lumber, and also from two different counties, Santa Cruz and San Mateo County. It's a very robust organization that ties us into a very helpful and beneficial network. Land Trust of Santa Cruz County is one of the partners in there as well. So special events, as I mentioned, these are all events that we're either fully sponsoring or partnered heavily in with, and we have increased them each year, and we continue to look for opportunities to do that. Typically, these are fundraising events that go to our local youth, oftentimes scholarships for them to participate in recreation programs or aquatic programs, or sometimes it's just fun to have a family movie night. So as I mentioned, there's your, all your free events that we're going to be doing in July in honor of Parks and Recreation Month. I do think it's important to mention that this is a partnership with the City of Santa Cruz Parks Department, the City of Watsonville Parks Department, and Boulder Creek Recreation and Park District, and the, to some degree, Capitol rec folks are helping out as well. So I think that in itself is a huge benefit, and we will culminate, although it does go out the 31st, I'd say the big culmination of this will be on the 27th, where Family Fund Day is going to be at Harvey West. So with that said, I'll say thank you, and I'll also back it up to that last slide so people can see that. I think I'll back it up. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So let me ask if there are any questions.
Yeah, I thank you. I just want to say, there's been a revival in the County Parks Department, Cultural Services and Open Space, and I'm excited about it. It's really, it's really, really, really great.
It might cost you $5.
And I want to thank, and if you want to know where that excitement comes from, just look no further than Jeff Gaffney, the director, and thank you for your enthusiasm, your foresight, and your leadership, and everybody in the Parks Department staff. It's truly great. This has been, our county parks, because of some recession-oriented issues that we had, it's suffered the consequences for several years, but now we're, there's, like I said, a revival of sorts, and it's really great to see that. I'm really grateful to the voters of Santa Cruz County in 2016 for passing Measure S, or Measure G, excuse me, which was critical and... or Measure G, excuse me, which was critical for initiatives such as the Felton Discovery Park next to the Felton Library. Fortunately, it looks as if some bids have come in very high for that, but we'll have to deal with that as we go along. And also, the three additional employees that you have, it's absolutely necessary for, to continue our effort to improve the offerings of the Parks Department. I appreciate the progress we've seen in the recent years, as you mentioned, with the Highlands Park in my district, the pump track in District Four, and Leo's Haven, especially in District One. That was quite a stirring opening that we had a couple of months, several months ago now. And I'm really excited also about the internship program at AmeriCorps, and I see Linda Skeff out there. She gets them to come back year in and year out, and it's just fantastic what they have been able to do up in the San Lorenzo Valley in particular, but I know throughout Santa Cruz County, and I think that's going to be a tremendous benefit, not only for the services and the opportunities it provides, but for the hands-on that these people that are involved with AmeriCorps put into it. They're great young people, and throughout the nation, it's really great to meet them and share their enthusiasm. They really like it. So hats off to Linda Skeff and others who are so much involved in that program. It's been terrific. And I think that we need to, you're right, we need to look at a more reliable funding stream. With that, with Prop 68 that you had mentioned, do you see, is there anything we can do to make our applications for projects more competitive, or how are we set to move forward and possibly get some funding from those grants that you had showed in your chart?
I think that both the contract grant writer that we brought onboard and the fact that we are looking at how we can expand our fees, whether it's CSA 11 and/or impact fees, those are areas in where we can generate revenue to potentially match those grants that we need to. And so I also think that our staff has developed really good relationships with a lot of the grantors, and so I think that helps as well. But in the long term, we probably need to develop more revenue in the future.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your leadership and your excitement.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. You know, Parks Department is sort of our most interactive department with the community and which there's so many great partnerships. We've seen that in so many different ways. People contribute to the parks, and the fact that we're seeing the construction of Leo's Haven, Santa Clara Park is a great example of a community coming together to support parks in such a significant way. I'm very excited about the activity in our park system. You mentioned Leo's Haven, which is critically important, and I go by there every day and look at the progress that we're making. In the plant fund, it had the Hardest O'Kell Park, which I'm grateful for the staff support to get the grants to help complete that park. But nowhere did I see anything about the Farm Park. And you were here a couple of weeks ago talking about, we're trying to get something done by the end of this year. What's going to happen with the Farm Park?
We are going to be somewhat dependent on being successful with a grant. If, we are going to apply for that grant in August, and that is going to be where the majority of the funding will come, but the funding that we have currently will pay for us to get to the design and potentially construction phase. But if we're actually going to construct anything additionally besides what we talked about in regards to the pump and/or bike track, which is the biggest piece, we will need help from the community members who stepped forward and said they would be willing to do that. So if we do not get the grant, then we would only have that available to us, the folks who have stepped forward and said they would help us build a pump.
With the bike piece, we get done this year?
Absolutely.
Great, great. I see the namesake of the Simkins Pool Complex. Bill Simkins here, he's here for, he has been very generous and helped name the pool, and we, one of the, this year's, in the operational plan, is that we're going to do a lot of deferred maintenance. And I'm wondering if you could talk about when you see that happening, how long will the pool be closed, how will it affect revenues?
Sure. We hope that the pool will be closed no more than three months. It will impact revenues. We'll try to do it in the slowest portion of the season. We have already met with and have met with regularly and continue to meet with the City of Santa Cruz, university system, and also Cabrillo on opportunities where we can send people who want to swim elsewhere. We could provide staff and/or support and allow that to be an alternative opportunity. And so, yes, it will impact revenue, and it will also displace some of the folks that go there on a regular basis. We do anticipate giving them plenty of notice and plenty of opportunities. It actually may turn out to be more beneficial in the end because we are encouraging the City of Santa Cruz to get Harvey West up and running again. It has been used in a very limited fashion, and so making that available year-round would be helpful because, as you probably are aware, Simkins actually parking lot fills up these days on a sunny day and never, I don't think, some people in the room may have anticipated that it would get used as much, maybe you yourself, but a lot of people when it was built didn't ever anticipate it would be used as much as it is. So as we look to the future, we probably do need to look at other opportunities for swim centers and/or places for people to participate in swimming.
Great. Well, do you expect that that work will be done in 2020 or 2021?
We are hopeful that some of the work will be done in 2020. We actually just are looking at finally buying some boilers, which the 20-year-old boiler that has kept going and going and going is on its last legs. That in itself was about $120,000, I think. And so that's one of the big items. We have to drain the pool, replace the stucco. Those are all items that we would like to see coincide with the library annex construction so that all of the folks that come there on a regular basis won't be impacted over the course of three months here and then three months there, if we could do it all at the same time. So that being said, we're looking at November, the second or third week in November, for the library annex construction to start. So that's potentially where we could get the work done.
November 2020?
Yes. Which also, as I said, works well for us in regards to the slowest time of the year for us at the swim center.
Okay. Well, I hope you'll keep us up to date about that. That'll be a big impact. That's a beloved community institution. And both those additions, the library addition and fixing the pool become really important. Associated with that is, I'm glad to see, and I want to thank our county administrative officer, you as the Parks Director, and the great community support to help build the shoreline soccer field. Bill had a great vision about how to have an all-purpose field that could be used by kids and families all year round, many hours a day, and I think it really adds to just the community senator of Live Oak will be in the area, and I'm glad that the county could participate in a small way in terms of waiving the fees for the project. I was there for the groundbreaking, and there were a lot of great donors. There's a lot of excitement in the school district, and I think this continues to help support families in Live Oak in such a big way, and the soccer field will actually help the whole mid-county because there'd be so many families who will be using it.
It's going to cost me $5, but I'm going to say I'm excited.
Okay. Cha-ching. The smart park maintenance that you also have as an operational goal, do you reach out to colleagues over in Public Works, because they have an asset data, database, and is there a way to use that system to support what you're trying to do in parks?
Yeah, our superintendent who's in charge of that project has been working with Public Works, and we looked at many different models, and ultimately, we do have a very unique operation in parks, and we may be able to use some of the tools they have, but what we're doing right now is the first step in many, so as we get further into the process, we may access some of the tools they have.
Okay, great. I mean, I think it's a great opportunity to build on something that we already use that is successful. Lastly, I'm looking forward to doing our first Live Oak Free Movie Night this coming Friday, hoping all the equipment's ready to go.
Yes, definitely. Finally.
But come out Spider-Man into the spider-verse.
Exactly.
It's Friday at Felton Street Park.
Yep, exciting.
Thanks for your work, thanks for everybody's contributions to help make parks successful. And it goes back to 2014 when we did, when we were able to reestablish parks as a independent department because of Measure F. 2016, they supported Measure S for the libraries, and in 2018, parks were a big part of the success of Measure G. So people love the parks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Parks, for all of your work, especially considering it was a department that had very few resources leading up until the last couple of years, still has not been built up to the point of before the recession, like so many departments here at the county. And speaking of that, I had a question. I appreciate the priorities that you work with every supervisor here to help establish those priorities for each district. And one of the things that I have noticed, and Mr. Simkins is actually a model of this, is that there are community members, there are private entities that are looking to invest in the parks, and I want to ensure that the Parks Department is really prepared, either through a local nonprofit, or maybe you see a different model, to actually accept these funds and find a way that we can construct things as a result of that. So I guess my question for you is, is there anything in the coming months or the coming year that you could bring forward that would make it easier for the community to directly get involved in a way, be it a naming component, where people can invest in specific things, be it elements at a certain park that people may want to purchase outside of just, we have the bench program, et cetera? Or maybe something even larger, if somebody's looking to come in. As was done in Capitol, for example, you know, Mark Monte had worked, a deal with the City of Capitol that in exchange for the fireworks, you know, and the money that was associated with it, and he built one park, he's trying to invest in another one. It just seemed like there wasn't an easy mechanism for somebody to do that in the same way, so I wanted to get your thoughts on that for the county park system.
Yeah, I would believe that as we've seen the County Park Friends organization develop and grow over the last couple of years, and most recently, we adopted an MOU with the board, a very specific MOU, I think we can do an addendum to that, I think we should be doing an addendum. We're looking at, I think to some degree, we want to make sure they're prepared to deal with that level of donation, that level of specificity and also complexity. So there's a lot of nuances that need to be in place, and there are several models around the state and even in our region that we can use, and we also are a unique county, as everybody likes to highlight. So to your point, I absolutely want to do that, and we will do that, and we need to do that, and I think it will take some further modifications of the MOU we have with County Park Friends, and also probably working with county council and working with this board. But I think that's very doable within the next six months to have something much more substantial than we do now in regards to those types of donations, those types of cooperative agreements, and private donors.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, we have a lot of land that we don't use at parks, or we have phases that haven't been completed in the case of the master plan, for example, at the Polo Grounds, I mean, it took 30 years to get a bathroom in. In the case of Sea Cliff Village Park, I mean, we haven't even finished the first phase technically, but there are multiple phases that still need to be done, but you have people that are willing to invest in it, and I want to ensure that we're not providing any block to that. I mean, because I think that we've got parks that could actually fulfill their need if we had a way, an easy mechanism for people to contribute and be able to do it. And so if you see those ways, I encourage you to bring those forward to the board. If things need to be modified, either at the ordinance level or any kind of policy and procedural level, let's make sure that we do do that. I appreciate the work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Supervisor Caput.
Thank you. Yeah, there's, thanks for everything you're doing. And the big difference between, what, 2015 and right now? You could just look at the chart, and it's really exciting to see that we're able to actually do something right now. And so, you know, beach access always comes up, and I'm kind of always surprised, you know, we're, taxpayer money pays for all the, you know, roads that lead to neighborhoods, police, sheriffs, and fire respond, that's all paid for by taxpayers at large, and then we can go on, maintenance leading to and from neighborhoods. And when a neighborhood shuts off access to a beach, they're basically saying, we're going to take advantage of all the taxpayer money leading up to our neighborhood, and the argument that crime rates will go down in their neighborhood because they shut it off. Well, that's true with any neighborhood. If my area in Watsonville shut off access to our neighborhood and you had to get a key in there, we'd basically just, you know, telling the public, keep funding everything leading up to our neighborhood, but don't cross and try to get to the beach. So, I mean, we're dealing with that, and how is it going? I mean, we could argue basically, when you, and if there's a big storm, and especially, I guess if you want to use the argument of climate change and all that, it would be the state, county, and everybody, taxpayer money trying to protect that beachfront property from actually eroding. So, I mean, how much time do we actually spend on fighting neighborhoods about beach access?
It's actually a very limited amount of staff time right now, as we said, in regards to the coastal encroachment program, I believe you're referencing, that that is a passive program, and we've asked people to come forward voluntarily, and also we are working with Coastal Commission on a regular basis for some of the bigger locations that have been large violators over the years. And we are also going to be doing a pilot project in the coming months that will take more staff time, but relatively very small amount of time and a great return as far as revenue that comes in as a result of that. So that was how we anticipated the program starting. This is sort of that first phase, and as we move forward in the next 18 months, probably see Phase Two implemented, and hopefully, five years out, we'll have a very robust and functioning, well-functioning program.
Right. But that's true. I understand the time factor, but is it taking money away from the Parks Department?
No, actually, we've seen revenue brought in as a result of the program, and we now have to make sure we work with the Coastal Commission to accomplish the tasks that we've agreed to with them. That could potentially cost some money, and also, at the same time, we will be vigilant about the revenue we use in regards to that, so it doesn't take away from our department.
Right. Then I guess something else I've mentioned before, too, if we have park space and we have beach access and beaches that we're all inviting people to come to, and then a neighborhood or a philosophy of building walls and building fences, I mean, I've seen that happen with schools and different areas. People that run those put up big fences, have it locked up. You can drive by the schools, try to have your kids go down and play at a public school on a Saturday where they walk down there and they're locked out. You know, I don't want to see that happen in the county where we put money into the parks and then we build up walls. And we're in a county that doesn't like walls in certain areas, right? But at the same time, the same people will say, well, yeah, we don't want a wall over there. Sounds familiar, right, the word? But then, but we're okay with having a wall locking off our neighborhood or our park area and everything like that so they can have their own personal use.
And our Parks Commission recently passed a resolution saying that they supported no more obstacles in parks and as few fences and walls as possible, and so that was something our Parks Commission did, and obviously, I'm very supportive of less walls and fences.
Yeah, I want to make sure our parks are accessible.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And doesn't become exclusive. The other would be, hey, thanks a lot, to thank the board and everybody and you for the pump track that we got in, and it's being used. I've driven out there, and I'm surprised at how popular it is. One little criticism, and that's something we can work out later, we did, about 20% or 25% of the cost went to another department, the planning department here in Santa Cruz County. So I guess we're the ones who decide if we're going to be able to, when we're doing something as a joint project, that we don't get the cost where we had to take Parks money and give it to planning in order to do, and if it was just a small amount, I wouldn't say anything, but it was about 25% of the cost. So maybe we can work something out where we can streamline something. I know they have to do their work, too.
Yeah. And the way that currently that we're structured, though, is each department tries to sustain themselves with the revenue they can bring in. So, it's, we pay our fair portion, but it is up to this Board to decide what they want to do.
Yeah. It's kind of like robbing Peter to pay Paul, right? So, anyway, thank you. And this is really, like I said, exciting that we're actually have a department because of funding and everything. And the voters actually voted and approved Measure G. I want to thank the voters on that one. That was, you know, very good.
Huge.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Supervisor McPhee?
There's a couple of points I missed. I just wanted to thank the department for working with the Boulder Creek Recreation District a few years back. We got some unfunded mandate money that each district was able to commit to projects or projects. And I, the county decided to dedicate a large portion to the Bear Creek Estates Rec Program. It's under the Boulder Creek Recreation Department. But I want to say thank you for working out that arrangement. And Hallie Green that heads up that, she is a tiger, I'll tell you. She is, she's excitable to see how much she gets done. And I just want to thank the Boulder Creek Recreation District and the County Parks Department for working that arrangement out. People in northern Santa Lorenzo Valley are very, very appreciative of that. One other point on page 261, the Parks completed, the Department completed a park dedication fee study. What were the results of that? It was in the last spring, I think it's March of 2019. What did?
So, that's where we're still, that's the park impact fees that we're currently working towards. And we would be probably working with the CIO's office and the Board of Supervisors in the next couple of months to determine what the best outcome for that is.
Great. Now, it's a member, now it's a chance for members of the public to come speak to us. I know we have several. So, if you are interested, please come forward and line up.
Good morning. My name's Teri Primavera, and I'm a physical therapist at Dominican Hospital. And I help get to coordinate our pep program, if any of you are familiar with it. I'll leave a few catalogs here in case you'd like to check it out. We have been partnering with Simkins for the last 20-plus years. And we rent pool space three times a week through three-quarters of the year, and then once a week during the busy months in the summer. And we can't be more grateful. We see, last year, we saw over 660 participants in the pool. And part of those people were patients in our outpatient physical therapy department. And they're seen for a whole host of conditions that really benefit from being in the water. I'm sure you all know the benefits of water, but I'll review a couple. So, if you are in water up to your chest level, you weigh only 30% of what you weigh on land. So, that allows you to do a lot more, oh, I didn't realize I was being timed. I'll make this a little faster. So, okay, fantastic. Can also help increase your lung capacity, and improve your mobility, and able to help you manage your weight. So, we have several classes each week, some of which are special for people with different disabilities. We have classes for people with Parkinson's disease, stroke, cerebral palsy, muscular sclerosis. We have lots of classes for people with lymphedema, which, if you don't know, is a condition caused primarily after cancer treatment. So, with radiation and surgery, your lymph system is impaired, and you can't manage swelling. So, you take on fluid, and it becomes a risk for infection and can cause death. So, people get to manage it by doing daily massage and pumping machines. Oh, dear. Or use the water. So, it's a much easier, more fun way to do it. So, we also see people who are pregnant, and then after pregnancy, and then a whole host of typical things that happen as we age, so for people with arthritis. So, I had a whole list of people that I wanted to go through, but I won't do that. I'll take a couple and tell you, with Simkins partnership, we can really improve people's sense of community, and inclusion, and independence, fun, and health. So, just two quick examples. One, we have a woman who moved here to the area, didn't know anyone, was a musician by trade. She came to live with her family. She has...
I'm sorry. We can't, if, if we could summarize, and you can send us an email with all this information if you want.
Okay. In general, we love Simkins. We don't know what we would do without you. We're super excited to partner with you, really, really excited. And thank you, thank you, thank you, from the entire community that we get to serve. We wouldn't be able to do it without you. So, we're very grateful.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today.
Good morning, Board members. My name again is Lori Chamberlain. I'm the Superintendent at the Live Oak School District. And I just want to thank you in advance for adding to your Board approval, the waiver for permit fees for the soccer field, the Live Oak School District soccer field at Shoreline Middle School. This has been a long time coming. As I started to say, it's been a three-year plan, and the project may be even more in Bill's mind. But it's been a dream, and it's really kind of the field of dreams, just as Bill's pep project was the swim center, working with the county. Now, he's working with our school district to make sure that students have a safe place to play soccer. The track team has a safe place to run, and, because it will also have a running path. But the entire community has access to it. So, families will be there enjoying soccer. Adults in the community will have the opportunity to play soccer. We're planning to add lights to the soccer field, LED lights set face down, so it doesn't radiate out. And there will be bleachers and picnic tables. So, we're very excited about this opportunity. We really appreciate the support we've gotten also from John Leopold, helping us through that permit process. And the way that everything works within bureaucracies and systems, we know, is going to be complicated. And also, thank you to Jeff Gaffney, who was also there at the groundbreaking ceremony on May the 20th. But special thank you, obviously, also to Bill Simkins. In total, he has raised over $2.5 million. $1 million of those dollars came directly from Bill and Bridget Simkins. And he's just been tireless in his efforts to get private donors, foundations, different groups to donate money. Kaiser's also put down a fair amount of money in this project, as they've also assisted the Live Oak community in other ways and other schools. So, again, I want to thank you all for your support. This, again, doesn't just benefit our students, but benefits the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for partnering with us.
And thank you for your partnership on the Boys and Girls Club, and the Cradle to Career Program. And, you know, Live Oak is a great school district that collaborates with others to the benefit of their families. And I really appreciate that.
Hi. My name's Bill Simkins, and I'm with the soccer group. And first, John, thanks for helping us get that permit. That's a few sleepless nights there. I really appreciate your guys' help on this with the soccer field. We've raised $2.5 million so far, and we're just about there. And so, we hopefully will be done at the end of October. But I think financially, we're there. Zach, you know, I agree with you 100%. I think projects like this, where you get public and private, is the way to go. I think it's a lot easier than you think. If you have the right project, when we did the fundraising, I'm telling you, I would get halfway through a discussion with the fundraiser, and they go, I get it. How can I help? And I think projects like this could, we could be a model of what could be done with the county, and the county doing this. Those kids and those families on a Sunday afternoon are going to be playing on that soccer field, they're not going to know who owns the soccer field, and they don't care. They just know that they're playing on a soccer field. And I think it's more, more possible than you think. Again, thank you for helping. And one last thing, Chef does a heck of a job for the county. I'm telling you, he is the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Where is the soccer field? Where is it located? I didn't catch that.
The soccer field is on 17th Avenue. It'll be right next to the Swim Center, on 17th Avenue. So, it's going to be the Swim Center, the Boys and Girls Club. People will be playing there in the evenings. Their kids could be at the Boys and Girls. It's all, it all works. It's the perfect place for it.
Bill, I just want to thank you for your philanthropy. You've really made life better for families in Live Oak. I know your commitment to the community is very strong. You do lots of things with the school district. Obviously, the Swim Center would not have been possible without you. And this project, you've, your personal leadership to help make it happen is really spectacular. And it's going to benefit families for years and years to come. And the innovative way in which you've used that the fees for the project are going to go into a fund to allow us to, to allow the school district to replace the materials over time, without having to go out and do a big fundraising campaign, is a great example of innovation to help long-term sustainability of the field.
This is going to be a great deal. You're getting a soccer field for five cents on the dollar.
Thank you.
Things written down. Hello, everyone, and thank you. And I think there is a wonderful theme of partnership that I'm hearing today. My name is Mariah Roberts, and I am here supporting the department. I'm here supporting our partnership with Jeff Gaffney and all of the staff. You all know me probably mostly as one of the moms behind Leo's Haven at Santa Clara Park. Today, Oliver is at a therapy session, so he and Tricia can't be here. But because of the partnership with all of you and with the department, the park is under construction. You saw a picture of our kids out there. Supervisor Leopold was there as well, as well as all of the staff, with their hard hats on, sitting on the machines, having a good old time. You know, our kids are seeing that this can happen. And I really wanted to come out today to sort of be proof of this idea that partnership can work. We did. We are. We raised $2 million of mostly small donations. And now, we have a public legacy project that will be here for generations. More importantly, it proved to anyone who doubted that our community can come together to support public space. Tricia and I both are very proud to have joined now the Friends of Santa Cruz County Parks. And we look forward to figuring out how to make these partnerships happen. How do we do it? We are here, and we are ready to go. And we're continuing this partnership because the Parks Department has been an open, creative, trustworthy, and effective partner. We're continuing because in the strategic planning process that we were lucky enough to participate in, we heard from all of our neighbors how much they care about these places. And we know that the Parks Department needs a solid financial foundation, so that we can continue to bring in investment and create partnerships to improve these places. So, we're grateful for your partnership and all of the time that you give to support this department. And we're looking forward to a lot of good work in the future.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah. Thank you for your leadership, not only Leo's Haven, on the Parks Commission, and now the Friends of the Parks. So, continue that great work.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Teri Corwin. I am the Board Chair of Friends of Santa Cruz County Parks, formerly CEO and President of the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County. And it was in that role that I learned that Santa Cruz County is a bit of an outlier in terms of low amounts of dedicated funding for parks and open space. And it's actually, I want to support our Vice Chair, Mariah, and her comments. But I like to focus on Director Gaffney's quest to convert general fund money to dedicated fund money. And I think it creates an opportunity for creative problem solving. I had the privilege of serving on the County Parks Strategic Planning Work Group. And a goal of that community-based project is to create dedicated and sufficient funding for the Parks Department, so that it's not eviscerated the next time we have a recession, which will happen, as it was in 2008. So, Mariah and I, with the support of the rest of the growing Friends of County Parks organization, are looking forward to meeting with each of you to explore ideas on how to make this so. The voters of Santa Cruz County have consistently supported their county parks and open spaces via Measure F, Measure D with the Wildlife Tunnel, and the Rail Trail, and overwhelmingly in Measure G. So, I am committed to leading Friends to play a key role in a new initiative. So, let's figure out a way to let the voters of this community have their say in supporting their beloved parks and open spaces. Thank you so much, Jeff, and for all of you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dave Ramos, and one of the things that I do here in the community is I'm a treatment technician at Janus of Santa Cruz. And I wanted to offer my thanks and support for the Parks Department, as well as for Simkins Swim Center specifically. Every Tuesday and Thursday, we bring our clients, our addicts and alcoholics, to Simkins Swim Center to swim. And this is an activity that is widely beneficial, more for their mental health as well as their physical health. This is something that's extremely awesome, and through the generosity of Mr. Simkins. One of the other things I do in the community is I'm a radio talk show host for the Veterans Take Charge Radio Show. And I recently found out that Simkins Swim Center offers free swimming for veterans. Currently, right now, Ms. Kim Rutherford is getting ready to take a handful of people to swim from mainland, mainland to Alcatraz. And the opportunity is just spectacular and fantastic. So, I wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, all. Thank you very much. I'm Trudy Ransom. I'm from the Sub Shack. I have the Santa Cruz Sub Shack. And also, I want to thank the County Parks and everyone for giving me this opportunity for creating a second Sub Shack. At Rio de Mar, we're excited of all the work that you're doing there. I go down there weekly to sort of see how it's progressing. And, you know, she's taken the opportunity and have a look at how it's progressing. We're going to be doing some fabulous things, working with the Aptos Chamber. Going to be, we've got the grant for the wheelchair access. So, I didn't really prepare for this today. I was just going to like come down and just say thank you. Yeah, it's going to be cool. Thank you for doing all this. We're going to be having another ribbon cutting when it's done. And we'd like to invite you all to come down. And we're excited to get the public out there to have some parks. And it's what you were talking about earlier. I thought, oh, yeah, we can do some youth programs there, because we have some very cool youth programs going on at the Sub Shack in Santa Cruz. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Barbara Jordan with the Santa Cruz Pickleball Club. You probably know us. And we wanted to thank you all for supporting us, both the Parks Department and Jeff and the supervisors, in letting us run programs at Brahma Street Park in Willowbrook. And in particular, Supervisor Leopold, for helping us work our way through the process to get our dream of four permanent pickleball courts at Brahma Street Park. And they are being used. I guarantee you, there are people out there right now using them, having towels down to dry off the courts. What, we do kind of an informal tracking of how we've progressed over the years, and I thought you might be interested in those numbers. At Brahma Street Park in 2018, granted, this is not scientific, so I, but at Brahma Street Park, we ran 81 sessions of three hours each, averaging 40 people per session. That's eight people waiting on average every time we do our sessions. I came up with this participant hour number. I don't know if it's a real thing, but that translates to 9,700 participant hours at that one site in 2018. At Willowbrook, which is a smaller site, we use only once a week, we had an average of 31 players per session, which was 2,400 hours of participant hours. So, I just wanted you to know that they are being used, and that your support of our little sport, I think, is a worthwhile investment. And thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Thank you for all the support that the Pickleball Club offers to make those courts heavily used, which is the goal. And thank you for your support of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors and our County Council's office in our annual competition.
Ah, that's right.
Good morning. And I am here as a member of the Valley Women's Club Board and the Director of the San Lorenzo Valley Native Habitat Restoration Program. And I would like to offer my support for the budget for the Santa Cruz County Department. I've collaborated closely with the county parks since 2015, planning and hosting five AmeriCorps teams. What was accomplished in the valley could not have happened without the strong partnership that exists between the Valley Women's Club Program and the committed administrative staff of County Parks. Jeff Gaffney's support, but a special acknowledgement of Eric Strum and Margaret Ingram, who were crucial in the planning and organizing of a very successful year this year. And they've also set the standard for what we'll be doing over the next five years. Our vision for habitat restoration in the San Lorenzo Valley became a reality because of our collaboration with County Parks. They provided the living accommodation, the staff to run the heavy equipment. They also shared tools and supplied necessary materials. And in addition, they supplied a CPR class for all of the teams to become certified, which was a big deal, because AmeriCorps looks for these classes to be provided by the sponsoring entities. These aspects of the partnership were crucial, but equally important was the dedication of park staff to maintaining to a very high level the parks in the valley to the highest standard, even when they were short-staffed. I support Santa Cruz County Parks and the ongoing work that they do with great enthusiasm. I would also like to thank Bruce McPherson for his support of the team over all of these years. He sets aside time to come and have dinner with us and to come in and meet with the team. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jane Mio, Vice President of the Valley Women's Club Board. And I'm here in support of the budget. And one of the reasons is because it allows for the restoration work, which is vital in the parks, because that way you can have bird walks and trail walks. And what you do upriver matters downriver. I'm also the lead of the Estuary Restoration Project, which is under the Valley Women's Club. And the co-linking is important. Also, I love that the budget is having pre-teen teen camps, because that is very underserved, as my grandsons tell me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheila Delaney, President of the Valley Women's Club. We have a history of relationship with the county and the county parks. We also have fabulous state parks in our district. But we have been working on the Felton Discovery Park. We have collaborated with Boulder Creek Reckon Parks. We umbrellaed the Quail Hollow Friends of the Park when they started. And I'm looking forward to partnering and doing more work possibly in Ben Lomond, which is the one place left that we haven't done some stuff. So, I'm very excited about this budget, and I don't have to pay fine.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Augie Dent, and I'm here representing the Opel Cliff Recreational District. And I just wanted to come in and, like everyone else, express my thanks to Director Gaffney and his staff for the recent partnership we've put together to kind of coordinate the operations of the district. And I think it's really been a great cooperation, a great partnership. So, we're thankful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. I'm Brian Largay, Conservation Director with the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County, and it's a pleasure to address you today in support of the County Parks Department. The Land Trust is guided by a conservation blueprint, which Teri Corwin pioneered, a 25-year vision for the county that emphasizes core themes. And Parks is particularly relevant to a couple of them. One of them is biodiversity. As you know, we globally are facing an extinction crisis. County Parks manages land where we have bald eagle breeding, coho salmon breeding, rare plants up at Quail Hollow Park. And we are greatly appreciative of the work County Parks does to steward those essential resources. We also have a healthy communities initiative around getting outdoors and staying healthy. And I think sometimes parks are viewed as frosting on the cake, as kind of an extra. But I think it's important to realize that we have a crises in healthy communities, too, whether it's physical activity and associated premature death associated with diabetes, or a lack of community and time in nature, which is associated with increased rates of depression and suicide, or if it's the crisis of equity and opportunity for all people to enjoy the community and natural things that bring health and well-being to us. And Parks is at the front line in addressing those issues, and a fantastic investment in preventative medicine that gives people the opportunity to stay healthy, get healthy, and choose their own path for how they're going to achieve that. And I just want to express strong support for Jeff's leadership in making that a reality here. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Well, here I am at the right place in the right time. My name is James Williams. I want to have two things to say. I have pages of notes, which I'm going to forget about, because most of what I had to say has been wonderfully expressed already. I have two things. One, I represent Friends of Quail Hollow, and we've been in operation for a number of years when the Parks didn't exist, the Parks Department didn't exist, and the county was in some hard budgetary times. We think we helped keep Quail Hollow Park alive and well during those times. There's a couple of things that we've noticed, and I think it's important. You folks are responsible for the macro overview, the budget and so forth and so on. I'm one of the micro people. I wander around Quail Hollow, and I talk to people who enjoy the park. People like us notice the difference. We really do. Jeff and his crew, his staff, and the Board of Supervisors are really on the right arc, and you need to keep it up. And the Parks budget is critical to that effort. The second thing I want to say is I'm a grandfather, and I'm also a follower of E.O. Wilson, if you know his work in biology and his half-earth theory. It's not just important, it's not just nice, it's critical for young kids to experience the outdoors. Quail Hollow is just one example. There's many others in the county and the state parks. It's absolutely necessary to have good, clean, accessible parks. And I think Santa Cruz County is an excellent example of that very, putting into practice that very theory. So, thank you very much for what you've done so far, and keep it up. And in your deliberations, if you come across any excess money here and there, the Parks is the best place to put it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Kate Minett. I'm the Parks Commissioner for the Second District. And I wanted to thank each of you for your Parks Commissioners. This is, we're a great group of representatives, and it's a great way for each one of us to know what's going on in other parts of the county. Thank you Supervisor Finn for bringing up Seacliff Village Park. This is something that has been on the forefront of, and not to be forgotten. So, I really appreciate that. I think that there's going to be great partnerships that can make sure we get our, even get into Phase Two. So, thanks very much, everybody, and yay Parks!
Yay. Are there any other public speakers who would like to talk to us about this item? Oops, got.
Hi, my name is Karen Long, and I'm actually the President of the Santa Cruz Pickleball Club. And I wasn't going to say anything, because Barb did such a great job. But when I heard these last three speakers, I thought, you know what? One thing that the pickleball has not addressed, really, or done any outreach for, is children. And this sport is phenomenal for children. And if we can get them into playing pickleball at an early age, and getting them out and moving, and healthy, and just appreciating the outdoors, that would be phenomenal. Whether we put one court in one little neighborhood here or there, you know, since tennis has been unfortunately declining, for whatever reason, we don't know. But to be able to put a court somewhere in a neighborhood, and then to have these kids taught, would be phenomenal. So, that just kind of came through my mind. And I just wanted to say, I hope I see everybody out there playing at this Supervisor's get-together, because it's going to be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you. We will. And you got to let us know if County Council's been out there secretly practicing. All right, so that concludes public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for deliberation and action.
I wanted to provide--
Oh, sorry.
If I could provide one clarification before you act on the budget. Regarding the supplemental item for the Live Oak Soccer Complex fees, I just wanted to clarify that we're not waiving the fees. We're in fact making a general fund contribution to pay for the fees. And that is because legally, most fees that the county charges cannot be waived. Impact fees, other drainage, storm drain fees, you can't waive them legally. There are some fees that we can waive, but these are not those. And so, what has to happen is when we have a county project or other, we actually have to make a general fund contribution to pay our fair share of those fees, because we're considered, just as every other user, as a contributing member of the public in those kind of impact fees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move the recommended budget, and note also that I think we've had more people speak on the benefits of our parks than any other subject matter that we've had to date. So, it's significant. It's a small part of our budget, but it's a big part of a healthy community. And thank you very much for coming.
Great. We've got a motion by McPherson, a second by Caput. Any other discussions?
Just one last thing I want to say. Cheryl Bailey is here. She's good. Her position is being eliminated in this budget, but she has been a critical person in so many projects in the mid-county and elsewhere. The Harder SoCal project is happening in part because she's been able to shepherd that through, write the grants, organize the community meetings, really work hard at that. We have lots of parks that have Cheryl's fingerprints on it, lots of redevelopment projects. Before that, I've really enjoyed working with her. She's been an important part of the county family, and I just want to recognize her for that work, because it's been outstanding. Thank you for that.
Thank you. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, that passes unanimously. Thank you to Jeff and the whole team for all the really great work you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is item number 35, which is to consider the 2019 to 21 proposed budgets for the Planning Department, including housing funds, as outlined in the reference budget documents, and schedule the continuing agreements list items for final approval on last-day budget hearings, June 25, 2019, as outlined in a memorandum of the Planning Director. And we have Ms. Provost here to speak to us today.
Good morning, Chair and Board and all. The Planning Department and Housing Funds is pleased to be here. This slide shows you an overview of the content of the presentation. We'd be happy to take questions as we go, or we can do that at the end, whichever you prefer. We'll start off with some of the accomplishments and what we're still working on accomplishing, some key things in the Planning Department. Every section has been involved in some very significant achievements this year, and these are just some of the highlights. With regard to E-Plan, those permit applications continue to increase. Kinks continue to be worked out. And we've set a September 1st date to implement a practice that nearly all building permit applications will be, need, required to be submitted through E-Plan. So, training sessions for members of the public are being arranged for July and August. And there is already YouTube videos available online for how our customers can use E-Plan. Proud to say that the team has made big improvements to our online permitting system. So, just three days ago, members of the public will now be able to pull common types of building permits fully from home or the office. So, they can apply online for the permit, they can pay for it online, and they can print out their own permit right at home or at the office. The first time they'll see a county employee is at that first building inspection. So, no need to come to the county building. And so, we're very excited about that, and we know our customers will really appreciate that. Within the building section also, some very significant projects have been going on this past year. And I want to particularly recognize Senior Building Inspector Sean Livingston, who's been providing building inspection services to two projects in Aptos, the Aptos Village Mixed Use Project and the Rancho del Mar Revitalization of that shopping center. With respect to code compliance, that's really having a great year as well. We've fully implemented the Administrative Citation Program, and that's effective. And I also wanted to especially note a major accomplishment of the cleanup of the Kayler property up in the San Lorenzo Valley, where many operative vehicles had been stored with environmental and community impacts. And that has now been fully abated, using county abatement funds. And that was one of the priority abatements that your board directed a while back. In development review, permits activity is up. We successfully implemented the new hosted rental program last summer, with all 250 available permits being issued by March. Also, the new cannabis permitting program began last summer. It's challenging, complicated program, but we are meeting its challenges. More applications are being submitted, more are being deemed complete. And we've had one approved and several scheduled for approval in the very near future, including the Kitty Yama project scheduled for approval on July 5. So, also in the discretionary development side of the Planning Department, there are several very significant development permit applications underway. And also, the Policies and Housing Section is continuing to complete the Affordable Housing Code amendments, and those should be complete by the end of the year. As you know, we've been working on the Safety and Noise General Plan elements and associated code changes for quite some time. The coastal bluffs and beaches in particular are very, very complex. So, you'll be hearing first the noise in airports components at the end of August, and then the remaining portion of the safety element at the end of September. We've completed the Seascape Beach Estates Combining Zoning District, and that will be submitted to the Coastal Commission in July, along with the cannabis code changes that you're taking action on. We've completed the Pleasure Point Commercial Area Vision and Purtola Drive Streetscape project. And a significant effort is the Primo Pi Permit Improvement Effort, and that's well underway. We've got three teams that are leading improvements to technology, to our building permit process, and the zoning and discretionary permit process. Members, you know, that'll include all agencies involved with the permit process, all staff welcome to participate and encouraged to, but being led in particular by some of the managers and staff that have been through the lean green belt and continuous process improvement training, as well as other leadership program. So, on the sustainability and special projects side, we're also very happy to have filled the last vacancy in our section. We had struggled with vacant positions for quite some time, and lack of resources as well. So, things are really coming together nicely. We've hired traffic and EIR consultants as well. And your board will have a study session on that effort at your meeting of September 24. Getting to the numbers now, then. This is an overview of the Planning Department numbers. It does not include the housing funds. For the coming two-year budget, we're not anticipating a whole lot of change. We are expecting some modest increase in development permit revenue year over year, based on last year's actuals and projected permit levels over the next two years. Our expenses are about 2.2 million, supported by about 3.1 million from the general fund and 9.1 in revenue from permit activity, grants, and other charges. So, that translates to a 75% cost recovery rate. And this is a slide you've seen in past years that sort of tracks over time. The gray bars show actual general fund support. The green bars show what was in the adopted budgets. So, you'll see, last year, we had a pretty aggressive forecast for permit activity, which didn't come true. Some significant development projects either didn't submit or didn't make as much progress toward pulling building permits. And of course, we had quite a bit less cannabis permit activity than we had anticipated. So, all in all, revenues averaged, from the general fund, averaged about $3 million per year over the past seven years. And we expect that next year, we'll have about a 2% increase in revenue over this year's actuals, and a bit greater increase the second year of this two-year budget. So, those, again, are the cost recovery numbers in terms of how self-supporting our department is through revenues, grants, and other revenues that come in. So, we're at 75%, which is, I think, a remarkable number, really. And in part, that is because of staffing. We've been able to sort of hold staffing fairly constant, even though some of the numbers of activities are going up. So, use of technology is helping us become more efficient, and we're able to keep those staff numbers somewhat stable. So, this is an overview slide of the changes over the past few years. We've held pretty stable at 67, 68 filled positions. We've held pretty stable at 67, 68 filled positions. We're nearly completely full of our vacancies. We've still got a couple, but we're filling those in the coming year in order to meet our expectations about General Fund contribution and also just the needs of the organization. We are proposing to delete one halftime position, and also, we are unfunding the Assistant Director, and we anticipate keeping that second Assistant Director position unfunded for the next couple of years. This is an overview of the staffing over time. You know, significantly reduced in the years, starting about 10 years ago, with the recession and the loss of the Redevelopment Agency. Over the past years, we've been slowly building back up staffing levels. We're very pleased that our department, you know, plays a strong role in helping to achieve the county's strategic plans and some of its key strategies and objectives relate very strongly to work that we have going on in our department. Over the next two years, a major focus will be on the General Plan Local Coastal Program, Sustainability Update, and Code Modernization. And that relates to the Community Development Objective, and so by the, per the operational plan, we're stating that we'll be completing the certification of that EIR by June of 2021. And that will be a long-awaited and significant achievement that we look forward to. Another strategic plan goal relates to reliable transportation, and so a part of that sustainability general plan update is the circulation element update. So that will reflect a lot of the Regional Transportation Commission's plans and priorities, but we all are also doing a countywide study of local traffic conditions in the unincorporated area. The analysis will reflect a shift to vehicle miles traveled, consistent with the recent update of the SEQA guidelines. And we're really going, you know, we realize how frustrating traffic congestion is in the unincorporated area, and so our traffic consultant and the team will be really challenging ourselves to see what can be done to address traffic congestion, you know, maybe some new ideas that can help out, and then be related to the Traffic Impact Fee Program in terms of yet more funding for implementation. Talking a little bit more about the Strategic Plan and Operational Plan as it relates to operational excellence, that is the, the Primo Pi is one of the demonstration projects. It's a complex demonstration project for the LEAN Primo effort. And we, you may know that we had a great team of staff from all of the permitting agencies spend a week in December of 2018 with a consultant. Many of staff also participated in the LEAN Green Belt training, and that process has been invaluable with many near-term successes. We've got a program of continuing work efforts involving all staff, and it will be a continuous process improvement. You know, we'll be working hard on it and probably never fully get done, but there's a lot of exciting things that have been identified that can really help out. So one of the efforts during that first week in December was the Permit Center group of people participating in that developed a mission and vision and values, consistent again with the County Strategic Plan, and that's presented here. In talking a bit about, you know, why we were so eager to be a demonstration project in the LEAN, you know, Primo effort. We interact a lot with members of the public. You know, we process a lot of permits, we do a lot of site inspections, lots of code compliance, we, people, public information at the counter, environmental planning, you know, touches not only building permit, but also discretionary permits, do SEQA review. We've got more and more activity happening over email with E-Plans, with building and zoning info lines, and so thousands and thousands and thousands of interactions, and a lot of opportunity to clarify, streamline, and better serve our customers through applying the tools of continuous process improvement. During that first week, you know, this was, one of the tools is used was, I frankly forget what you call this diagram, but they, they think of a lot of ideas and put them on sticky notes and then arrange them by ease of implementation and how impactful implementation of that idea might be. And, you know, paste them up into the quadrants and use that as a way to prioritize work on some of those improvement efforts. And in addition to, you know, the Primo Pi and the, you know, code changes and process changes and organizational collaboration and, you know, trying to strive together to function as one development services center operationally, we're excited to be working also on a physical manifestation of that and are beginning to look at floor plan changes and physical changes to our lobby and public counter area to really be able to implement a true one-stop public counter, staffed by all permitting departments and agencies. So we are hoping that that is complete by June of 2021. At this point then, I'm going to have Julie Conway go through the Housing section of the presentation.
Good morning, Board members. The Planning Department manages 19 active housing funds that are aggregated for budgetary purposes. The housing fund balances are typically appropriated in order to be available to commit to housing activities because timing of the activities can be uncertain. An example, the current fiscal year budget appropriated about $5 million, anticipating support of the 17th and Capitola Road Affordable Housing Project. This will happen next fiscal year rather than this fiscal year. The housing funds, the whole dollars available for investment are the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, or the RDA Reuse Fund, the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund, and the remaining dollars of the Plant Fund from the pre-2011 housing bond, which is where the Housing Services Contract lives. This year's investment in the revolving loan fund for the Affordable Housing Preservation Program was established through the Housing Services Contract, and that ensures that the county will have the ability to preserve affordable homeownership units. The 17th and Capitola Road project is expected to soon be scheduled for public hearing for its discretionary permits, and after that, for funding commitment will be recommended. Your board recently approved acquisition funding for the land property, and that funding is expected to be expended in the next few months. The state has been reorganizing its housing grant programs with additional funding made available with the passage of recent bond measures. The Housing Section will continue to pursue every opportunity to bring housing money into the county. We expect to learn in July whether a $3 million CDBG grant application will be awarded funding. That request included funding for construction of a new clinic for the Santa Cruz Community Health Center, rehabilitation of an existing farmworker housing property, and a planning grant for domestic water in Davenport. The Planning Department is collaborating with the Health Services Agency on the No Place Like Home Program in an effort to create housing for people who are chronically homeless and have a serious mental illness. These units can be part of any affordable housing project throughout the county and the cities. The County Health Department is an applicant for all NPLH projects, and the projects could add between 50 and 75 units in the coming years for this target population. Housing staff will work with partners to submit competitive funding applications through state bond funds and low-income housing tax credits. These projects need local match dollars to be competitive, so using limited county housing dollars strategically to maximize the number of units created is important. And of course, housing requires adequate appropriately zoned land, and the department is actively working on making that possible as well. As stated earlier, the Planning Department is working on completing regulatory amendments for employee-sponsored housing, including farmworker housing, and the department hopes to assist stakeholders and nonprofits to successfully implement these employer-sponsored housing projects in the near future. A key effort for the Operational Plan is farmworker housing, and your board recently endorsed goals of providing 300 beds within small projects on farms and 200 units of family farmworker housing. The Atkinson Lane land site is being acquired by Mid-Penn Housing, and this would be the first project that will work towards meeting the goal of affordable housing for farmworker families. Turn it back to Kathy.
All right. One of the other County Strategic Plan goals relates to dynamic economy, and achieving a dynamic economy in part relies on having housing for employees, being able to reliably get from point A to point B on the transportation network, and maintaining the quality and desirability of both natural resource assets and built environments of neighborhoods and the community. So those factors that support a dynamic economy, as described earlier in these presentations, are all factors that the Planning Department Work Plan Activity supports to support achievement of a dynamic economy. We, we're processing several key development permit applications, as mentioned before. That includes a very large new medical office building, new affordable housing projects, a large shopping center revitalization project, and the 7th and Bromer visitor accommodation and housing project, as some of the key projects we'll be processing. With regard to the sustainable environment, again, there's that safety element that will hopefully soon be adopted, and then it will need to go to the Coastal Commission for certification. But that does meet certain fairly recent state laws that require the county to address climate change and other hazards. And with respect to the hazards, a related document is making sure that the local hazard mitigation program is kept up to date, and that is something that David Carlson is the lead planner on, and that, ensuring that we get that done on time, which is by December of 2020, allows the county to preserve its ongoing eligibility for a disaster planning and disaster relief fund. So that is an important document to make sure gets done on time. Lastly then, a big thank you to the Planning Department team. We're very, very fortunate to have such a dedicated and talented team. There've been many accomplishments over the past year and very important work ahead of us. So I extend my thanks to each and every one of them, as well as to the Planning Commissioners and to the CAO's office, especially Melody Serino, and to each of you Board members. Thank you very much. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you. I'll just begin by saying, I just want to thank you for your leadership. You just referred to people making applications to the county as clients. That's a, that's a big change in sort of, a symbol of a change in culture and the e-permitting and the streamlining and the primo, and I thought your operational plan goals are really good and a step in a good direction at really simplifying the process for people and doing more permits with the same number of staff. So that's not easy, and I know there are all kinds of systemic changes and cultural changes that have to be made, but I want to thank you and the entire department for really, you know, grabbing on and being, taking this with gusto. Are there questions? Supervisor McPherson.
Yeah, a couple of statements and then questions. You have a full plate, there's no question about it. There's a lot of issues that, related to housing and general planning that you've got to come to grips with by the end of next year for sure, but right in front of us. And I want to thank you for making a difference in addressing our housing shortage. As I've said, in 40 years, I haven't seen the energy or the emphasis placed on we need, the need for more housing in Santa Cruz County. And to catch up is going to be very difficult, but I think with the accessory dwelling units, code modernization, enhanced bonus densities, and farmworker housing issues, we're going to be able to reach those goals. And there's a lot of issues that are, they're not moving targets anymore, but there are opportunities for us to reach some of our housing goals. We, you, I appreciate having an additional planner through the supplemental budget and the work requirements you face. I think that's well deserved, and it's about time. And I'm glad to see that we're finally moving ahead with the environmental review and the long-sought-after Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan. You do hope to, I hope that, and I, from your presentation, I see that part of that is to hopefully reduce the stress on our transportation network too. And we've heard other people say about having people be home at their, being able to do their jobs at home so they don't have to make that, which should be a 20-minute drive from Watsonville, to be 40 minutes to an hour each way. So I think it all comes together if we can get the planning structure right and some of the policies that we're trying to, some of our departments are trying to face here. Our office receives many concerns about the need for more code enforcement, and you did address this. I mean, we had, I think, 75 unresolved code enforcement cases in the San Lorenzo Valley, which seems to be where a lot of those cases reside. And we were about, we were able to address about 10% of them. With what you have now, do you think we'll be able to make a, and a key one up in the upper San Lorenzo Valley, do you think that you'll be able to resolve more of those issues then, this year?
Yes. I guess I'll use the opportunity to point out that if you remember, a year or two ago, we sort of collapsed all the different flavors of abatement funds into one fund so that we would have more flexibility for use and not be constrained to this type of abatement versus another. And so we brought to you some recommendations for key priority abatement projects that county funds would be used to abate, and you endorsed those, and we're carrying those out, and we're nearly complete. But that means that that pot of money is nearly, nearly exhausted. So we have not requested in this proposed budget new funding into abatement funds, but, you know, I think that would be something to keep an eye on with respect to how effective we are going to be able to be, especially with regard to some of those significant large abatements where the property owners are simply not complying and not, not properly abating. Other than that, I think we have a strong team in the code compliance section. If I were to be asked, you know, if you had one more position that you're able to fund and fill, what would it be? It would probably be the code, a code compliance officer in the code section. We have one position in our budget that is remaining unfunded.
Well, they've done an excellent job in that, with what you have, and it's a continuous subject of conversation up in the San Lorenzo Valley and I think throughout the county. So if you could make a modest investment in one place, that would probably be it.
Yeah.
Right. What timeline do you have now for creating the one-stop shop with Public Works? With that, I want to say, this is another example of a collaborative effort that I really impressed with, and I think the people of, well, the employees of the county and the people of Santa Cruz County will appreciate for many years to come when we get this done. And I just wanted to get an idea of the timeline on it and make sure that environmental health is really involved in that, that process.
Yes, definitely. We're working with Public Works and Environmental Health most prominently, and also the other permitting agencies, sanitation, fire, et cetera. It'll pick up more strength and speed as we get more into it, but the hope is, you know, on the optimistic side, we'd be, have a one-stop shop at the end of 2020. Realistically, it'll probably go into 2021 before we're actually opening the door to a new physical space.
Do you think that the e-permitting and so forth will help with that whole situation in some sense, I guess?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, one, one thing to point out, I suppose, is that we're keeping an eye on is that with E-Plan, the metering that happens in terms of, you know, people getting in line, signing up, taking slots at the counter, you know, there's only so many people we can serve. With E-Plan, it's open 24/7, and so we'll be getting lots of applications, and we'll be really needing to, to service that E-Plan system more, and it'll be interesting to see how that affects volumes at the public counter. I think we're going to be in a position to process more permits, and, you know, there's efficiencies certainly with E-Plan is going to make our, issuing those regular, common types of building permits is going to reduce our workload as the customer is able to just apply and print them out themselves. But it'll be interesting to monitor to see what happens, but
It'll be interesting to see.
We expect to be issuing more permits with, more efficiently.
Be interesting to get some kind of a track record by, say, by the end of the year or something, the first of the year, how that's going.
Well, this is the year we're focusing on Well, this is the year we're focusing on performance metrics, right?
Performance, yeah, right.
So we're putting our thinking caps on in terms of measuring right now how things are and being able to compare as we make these improvements with what's happening.
And with the approval of the state budget, and there's some follow-up legislation, but there's a real focus on housing, and that's come as you've developed, started developing this budget six months plus ago. Does what the state has done in regard to housing in general, does that create more opportunities to these 19 active housing plans? Or is there anything that's coming along that you expected or didn't expect?
Yeah, there's quite a bit more funding coming out of the state. And, you know, starting with the SP2 grant, you recently, at your last meeting, authorized us to submit an application for $310,000, and that will help our general plan update and help us get ready for the housing element update, you know, doing the EIR. That's going to help a lot. And then, most recently, there's, I think you received a report at the AMBAG Board just last week of another pot of money that's becoming available to collections of councils of government. And so we're in the central coast, kind of mega cog, and as I understand it, there's going to be about $850 million available to be distributed within the counties and cities of that four-county region. It will be a competitive program, but there's a lot of flexibility with what we're going to be able to propose. And so, you know, housing plans, infrastructure master plans, funding housing trust funds, you know, a whole variety of things, and we're just beginning to get our arms around what that program is going to be like.
Okay, well, thank you for keeping up with the challenges ahead, and appreciate your work and everybody in the department.
Supervisor Caput.
Yeah, thank you for your report. And I was going to ask, just in general, for the public to know, when we're, we did things to speed up the process, and in the same time for them to get a permit, let's say, to do, let's say, a half a bath to add to their house. In general, just a standard request like that, how many permits and how much time would it take them? Do they have to get an architect first to draw up a plan?
No. If it's just remodeling an existing bathroom, you're not relocating or anything, that would be the type of thing that I believe you're going to be able to do through the online permitting program. So you might need an electrical or mechanical permit because you're going to need your plumbing, your new plumbing or your new electricity inspected. But we don't need a whole plan for it. You know, the bathroom already exists, and you're just remodeling it, so that would be the type of thing you can go online and apply for the appropriate kind of permits, print it out, and start doing the work, and then call for inspection when you're ready for your, you know, your plumbing and electrical, et cetera, inspection.
Right. And so how did we make that faster and also maybe a little more cost-effective than it was in the past?
I think just by what we just mentioned, you'll be able to, you know, any day and any hour of the day, you'll be able to go online and apply for and pay for and print out a permit. So that's, as fast as you can do it, you'll have your permit. And then you can start the work. And so we expect, you know, that the cost will go down. The more efficient that we can be, the less it's going to cost the customer. And I'll note that we have not increased our planning rates in about four years, and that reflects the increasing efficiency with which we're operating. So we're making progress on reducing fees and requiring less time to get permits.
And who goes out and inspects it as it's being built, for example?
Building inspectors.
What's that?
Building inspectors do that work.
Okay. You bet. Okay. And let's see. On a renovation, there's a percentage of, what is that percentage on the home that requires less, I guess, paperwork?
Well, I'm not, are you talking about maybe non-conforming structures?
Yeah, somebody, in the past, we raised the percentage of, yeah.
I'm not quite sure what question you're asking. If it's non-conforming structures, it used to be more difficult, especially for commercial properties, to remodel and do work on structures that don't comply with current code. And so we changed the way that we measure that several years ago to what's called a major structural components and a more of a whole-house look at a non-conforming structure, and that has made it much more feasible to remodel existing non-conforming structures. So that's been in effect for probably about seven or eight years.
Just a few years back, we voted on a percentage, I think, of value. For example, somebody's going to put in all-new windows, what percentage is that? I don't know, is the roof considered just upkeep, or is that a percentage of a renovation?
If you're just putting new shingles on, that's not considered a major structural component. So the roof is literally the roof framing that is considered in that calculation.
That's pretty much streamlined.
Yeah.
The roof.
Yeah.
Okay. But if they were going to tear out walls and, you know.
That gets more complicated.
Then we look at percentages.
That's right.
All right. Anyway, thank you very much.
Sure.
Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and the work that's done all the time. I want to talk about some of the information that you presented here, which I found very useful, to look at those numbers of what's coming through the department. Those would be the kind of great information to actually have in the budget to share with us. But one thing I noticed, and you brought up the, this potential staffing issue about code compliance, the number of code compliance issues has dropped significantly. And I'm wondering, is that a reflection of lack of staffing, or is it better compliance? Or what do you think that is?
So the percentage change, the number in the far-right column there is this current year as compared to fiscal year 11, 12. And that was a year, I think, that, it was only a year after I got here, but as I recall, there was a fair amount of purging of cases, and that's somewhat related to switching to the new Hanson Infor computer system. And so we had some really old cases that had been hanging around, and I think that we stopped those. You know, I haven't frankly done a full analysis of, you know, it says 920 new cases in 11 and 12, and I'm not quite sure why it was that high. I think these days, we're, you know, the compliance by mail in terms of warnings, the administrative citation program is helping us to induce people to comply more readily rather than have it remain an ongoing, you know, problem. So I think that those, that tool has been very effective. And again, having the abatement funds and being able to tackle some of the things on our own that were significant violations that were just hanging out there. So that's going on. But, you know, we feel good about the code compliance program. You know, I will note, you know, that the cannabis licensing office also has two code compliance officers, so that could be some of the reason why our numbers are down, because we used to do more cannabis, and now they're doing it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's the part of the Planning Department, which everybody loves to criticize the Planning Department, till their neighbor starts building something, and then they want code compliance to come out, and then they want us to bring down the hammer of God on them. And they're always surprised when we can't do it as strongly as they had anticipated. But it'd be good to know more about that. I'm glad to hear about the E-Plan piece. I think that that's something that people will find very useful, especially as people increasingly like to do stuff right from the comfort of their home and to be able to print something out. And if we're able to process more applications that way, does it create an impact on the inspection staff?
It could.
And how do we look at that?
Yeah, it could. I mean, and we're keeping an eye on that. You know, we're fully staffed with building inspectors. We were able to add one new inspector last year. So we've got, you know, a fair number of our building inspectors. I think only two of them have been there longer than four years, but it's a great team. They're efficient, and they're hanging in there. So, but we will have to keep an eye on that because, you know, with the ease of getting a permit, you know, we're hoping that there's less unpermitted activity and an increase in requests for building inspection.
Yeah. Also, down here, the abatement funds that you talked about, they have been very useful for problems, especially in the rural part of my district, to deal with cases. And it seems to me that it's worthwhile for us to have money in that fund because we have some cases where we have to, there's a part, there comes a time in that enforcement process where we have to make sure something gets done. The public expects us to get something done. We've identified it as a problem. We've gone to the administrative law judge, you know, we've done everything, and still that problem exists in the neighborhood. And having those abatement funds, I think, when we put it all together, was great. But I think that it's useful to have money in that fund for, to deal with cases, because I'm sure we all have cases.
Yeah, we agree. And so we'll be keeping an eye on that. But kudos to Matt Johnson. He's the manager of the code compliance, and Aaron Landry and the rest of the team, they're doing a great job, and especially on those significant abatements that we hadn't done anything quite like that in quite some time. And so there's four or five significant projects that have been managed this past year.
Yeah, I just think it's an important asset to have. In looking at the strategic plan goals, there's a lot of different things to say something about, but I'll just focus on a few of them. The permit center team by December 19 is great, but the one-stop permit center, another 18-month after that, it's just, you mentioned that maybe that would be done sooner. That's probably the number-one complaint that we get from people, is how long something takes to get through.
Yeah.
The process.
Right. Well, I'll note that, you know, from an operational standpoint, in terms of the collaboration and partnerships with the other agencies and working on streamlining, that's going on right now. So we're trying to view ourselves as a single team. And the Primo Pie exercise has broken down silos. That was really helpful for people to dive in and get to know better what each of the other agency partners do. And, you know, we're really looking at every aspect of it and trying to get everybody on the same page, even with regard to what's considered a completeness comment, what's a compliance comment, what's going to be a condition, and when do we have to raise all these issues? And do we have to raise them all, you know, right up front? Because that can be pretty imposing for some applicants. But, you know, so we're, operationally, we're moving toward a one-stop shop. It's just the physical manifestation of a space, you know, being rebuilt, and that's going to take a little bit longer. If we're going to do it, we want to do it right.
Sure. Well, in many of these strategic plan goals, there are some ambitious timelines. And I know that this time next year, we'll be looking, sort of diving down a little bit more deeply into all those pieces, and I look forward to that discussion across all of our departments. But I particularly just want to mention that if, that we have other times of the year in which we talk about budget, and in November, we'll talk about it before the process starts, and in February. And if you're sensing that resources are needed to complete these, there are so many here that are important, that it would be great to raise a hand then so we know and not just have to wait 12 months to figure out that we're behind. I think it would be, it would be great, it would help you out, it would help the community out, definitely help this board out. And I look forward to that continued discussion.
Good, thank you.
Supervisor Fran.
Thank you, Chair. Again, also thank you for the presentation and the work of your team. A lot of this has been happening in my district, and so I know that we've had a lot of work with your department, as well as with Public Works this year, on making sure that some of these projects get seen through. The degree by which that can become a one-stop process would also make sense for us as well. I mean, as it stands now, we sometimes even get confused of where something is caught up in, the developer or the applicant doesn't necessarily know, they just send something into a system, they're asked to navigate a confusing system. And I think that it is sometimes hard for us to be able to explain to the applicant timelines or why one thing was returned in three days and another took 29 days. And so the degree that, by which we have something that even just makes sense and is explainable, I think, is helpful. I know that the board is very interested in looking forward to the sustainable, both the code mod and sustainable happening in the next, well, I don't want to put a timeline on it, but at some point in the near future. I will say that there are people that are kind of caught in this purgatory interim period right now that are operating, say, especially on the code mod. Maybe they've had a long-term bed and breakfast, or whatever it may be, and it's unclear how, whether they'll fit in the system or not. And so what I wanted to ask is whether there's ways by which, you did work with one business within my district in this regard, but there's ways by which people can get some sort of clarity in the interim in advance of the board action? Because right now, what we don't want is code enforcement on something that's been a historic use, even though it may fall out of it with the code mod, but I want some sort of clarity for some of these businesses in the interim. What would be a process that they would take?
Oh, you know, we have use permit, it depends on which aspect you're asking about. If it's, if it's commercial weddings on residential properties, not associated with a bed and breakfast, that's probably the one that's least clear because our current code does not, you know, it only has the home occupation regulations. But that is the path that's available, is home occupation regulations. We understand that your board is not excited about that, and we've had, you know, some applicants not be successful in taking that path. And so if we get interest, we explain the risk to some of the potential applicants. But in terms of bed and breakfast, you can apply. That's basically a conditional use permit with a zoning administrator hearing. You can amend existing permits if you're wanting to expand the nature of what you do, or the frequency, or the hours, or what have you, that there's an amendment process that's available.
Okay. Thank you. In regards to housing, we've made a lot of strides. We're nowhere near where we need to be. The state isn't anywhere near, actually, the country isn't anywhere near where they need to be. I actually was thinking about more of our zoning structure. We're obviously doing something throughout with the Sustainable Santa Cruz to encourage development in specific areas. And I appreciate the work on the farmworker housing. Realistically, a lot of this is just what the state's already mandating that we do and providing a framework for it. Have we ever, when we, there was a lot of pushback on the state proposal, Senator Weiner's bill specifically on zoning. I mean, I understand it, I live in a single-family zoned area, but there's also a history of redlining of districts that created these single-family areas, which we don't really talk about for some reason. And I was wondering whether or not we, as a county or the Planning Department, have ever looked at the historical maps and tried to do a sense of an overlay of how our zoning is compared to where we used to have in this county directly discriminatory zoning policies as a way to help explain to the community of why things are the way they are and how things could probably change through zoning shifts? Have we done any historic work that way?
Well, you know, it's certainly something that we talk a lot about, and we know that there, in our community, that there are areas that where zoning was used as that tool. Those, you know, gradually over time, that's changed. Where we've really focused is how is it that we can create the variety of housing types? And I know you hear us talk about that a lot, but it really is, if, in only allowing single-family to be built, that inherently, because it's the most expensive form of housing, provides a discriminatory framework. So we are very aware of that, and of course, we've been working towards kind of a gradual change of, within the community, of to the point of acceptance of a greater variety of housing types.
I mean, we've done it with ADUs. We've built around the, sort of, the outskirts on parking discussions, but, I mean, all these are really red herrings for what, I mean, let's be honest, right? I mean, so we, these make substantive but not substantial changes in the trajectory. And so I guess the question is, is once we move forward on the Sustainable Santa Cruz, absent state action, although I think state action is realist. absent state action, although I think state action is realistic moving forward, some sort of understanding. Our county may be exempted on a population side, but maybe not on the transit side with what's coming down with the rail corridor, ironically. Then what are we... Are we looking for ways within the single-family zoned areas to actually provide for some sense of intensification? I recognize it's not a popular stance to take, but realistically, given the history of what created those zones, I think it's an honest look to take within the unincorporated area.
Well, as part of the code modernization and the Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan, we are going to be revising, you know, slightly revising the existing residential zoning districts to clarify them. But there'll be some modest adjustments there, particularly in the small-lot, single-family realm. So right now, our development standards, you know, it might be the same density, but the development standards don't very well accommodate small-lot, single-family, so detached single-family homes, but just on smaller lots. And so that is something that's in the SSSE code mod that can help. Because we do, you know, throughout the county here and there, we've got larger existing vacant or underdeveloped lots within single-family neighborhoods that could, you know, develop rather than, you know, 10,000, 12,000 square foot, single-family lots that could increase and still be detached, single-family, but could get the numbers up on some of those large areas.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, let's open it up for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to talk to us today? Seeing none, I'll close public comment to bring it back for deliberation and action.
I'll move to recommended actions.
So we got a motion by Friend and a second by McPherson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And thank you for your work, and we're excited for all the happenings down in the planning department.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to our final item for today, which is to consider the 2019-21 proposed budgets for Public Works DPW as outlined in the reference budget documents and to schedule the continuing agreement list and amendments to the unified fee schedule for final approval on last-day budget hearings, June 25, 2019, as outlined in a memorandum of the Assistant CAO and Director of Public Works. Mr. Machado, thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right. Good morning, Chair Coonerty, Board of Supervisors. As you introduced me, my name is Matt Machado. I'm Director of Public Works and one of the Deputy CAOs. Before I get into the presentation, I think the down...
Down.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to thank a handful of people that made this large lift to create this budget for your review. Start with our Public Works team. We had a number of people involved, including Kim Moore, Steve Wiener, Kent Edler, Sonya Lycans, Betsy Lindberg, who's since retired, but she had a hand in it, of course. And then I'd really like to thank our program managers. It really takes a team to bring all the numbers together, the ideas together, the projects. And so many of those are here today in the audience, and I'd like to thank them. And then, of course, we couldn't have made this happen without the CAO office. Trish Daniels was very, very instrumental. And then Carlos and the rest of his team have been very supportive, and I'd like to thank them publicly because they've done so much good work to help bring our Public Works budget together. Today, I will cover a handful of items, the overview, accomplishments, some staffing, our budget numbers, operational plan highlights, challenges, risks, opportunities, and of course, end off on recommended actions. So to begin with, a bit of an overview on our department, I'll just highlight a couple of changes for this coming year that we have just recently implemented. If you look at the first column, the administrative services, we've added a box called process improvement. That's not additional staff. That's just an effort to put more focus on process improvement. And truly, everything we do is a process, and so that means there's opportunity for improvement. So we've tried to identify this as a point in our organization where we put more attention to it, and this is the start of that. Under the capital projects, real property is relatively new under this category. It used to be under administrative services. Under transportation, you'll see fleet management. That used to be under administrative services, and now it's where it actually does most of its work with the roads team. It also supports the other operations such as sanitation and our landfill recycling operations. So we'll start with accomplishments from our fiscal year 1819, and there have been a lot. And a lot of times, what you hear from us are our challenges, and we will cover those today. But it's always great to highlight accomplishments because the department really does great work for our community, and so we want to highlight a few of those. So this past year, we did complete our Davenport recycled water project. Whoops, sorry. Didn't want to do that quite yet. For Freedom, we've actually put a lot of attention there, and we're going to see a lot of this work happen this coming year. This is our sanitation project. This past year, we secured $4.5 million in grant funding. An additional $4.5 million will be through loans, which will be paid back by our utility users. This project will go to construction in the summer of 2020, so it's in design today. But we're very happy to have funding in place and our finance plan ready to go. The third item is the Tremblay Pump Station. This is also in Freedom, and we expect completion this summer. So that's quite exciting for the Freedom area. Some additional accomplishments. And Supervisor McPherson, you mentioned the Felton Library, which we're just as excited about it. It's well underway. We expect completion at the end of this calendar year, which means that early in 2020, we should be occupying it and using it, and very excited about that. One additional item I'd like to mention about the Felton Library is that we are coordinating a road resurfacing program in that area for 2020. So we'll have a new library, and then in the summer of 2020, as part of Measure D, we'll be resurfacing those area roads. So we'll have a really fresh look with new crosswalks and new striping to accommodate the new library. So pretty excited about that. Additional accomplishments are the facilities and opportunity study that we completed. The next step for that is to bring an item to your board this coming August to look at our long-range master planning and our campus master plans. But the facilities and opportunity study was the first step. And then one of the improvements, we see this as part of our process improvement, was the implementation of a new procurement process. We call it KUPCA. And it's a state program that we've opted into now. It'll become effective July 1. I will add that this will result in time savings and cost savings. And what we plan for this coming year is to track that, and we will let you know next budget season what kind of savings we actually saw that materialized throughout the year. So we're really excited about KUPCA and the new streamlining of...
Chair, I have a quick question on that, Mr. Machado.
Yes, sir.
What defines a small public project dollar amount?
So the current law is less than 200,000 has a streamlined procurement process. It doesn't mean we don't bring items to the board. It just means that we can streamline the bidding process. It's a more informal process.
And would that apply, then, for CSAs that are looking to do small projects?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Everybody benefits. Yep. Some additional accomplishments. We talked a bit about the continuous process improvement team. We've automated a handful of areas. You can see here electronic invoicing for grant funds, automated construction, project bidding, tracking, and then improved contract processing, which has saved us about two weeks, which is great for considering the number of contracts that we implement throughout the year. Additionally, some accomplishments that we're very proud of are our investment in our fleet. This past year, we've procured over $2 million in heavy equipment for landfill and an additional $1.5 million for our DPW roads operation. I will add that our fleet operation is under relatively new management. They're very data-driven. They have a serious focus on equipment use because the way the equipment is used in our department is that the more we use it, the lower the rates can go. And the lower the rates go, then the more we can rent it out, get more work done, which is a real bonus, and then we can keep the equipment fresh and new as well. So continuing on with accomplishments, we'll look at some of our road operations. This past year, we completed nine storm damage projects with 40 additional in phase of development. We completed two and a half miles of overlay projects, and we completed our 2018 Measure D, which was about six and a half miles of county roads resurfaced. Additionally, we completed our pavement condition survey, which we gave you a presentation in, I believe, it was February. I will add on to this, and this seems like an appropriate time. These are the accomplishments of the past, but we never lose sight of the future. And so the coming future for 2019 Measure D is an additional six miles of resurfacing. And that project is anticipated to start construction here in about three weeks. So I thought it would be appropriate to mention today because it's so near term. Additionally, in 2019, we will be programming our expanded RSTP, the STBG funding for our federal aid resurfacing program. And I'd like to thank this entire board for your support at the RTC recently.
Can I just interrupt one? Sorry, again. Do those projects that you want to start right in three weeks, do they have to be done by October or November because of environmental issues or anything like that?
Well, it's best to have them done before the winter season. It's hard to do some of the paving and striping in the winter months, so the goal is to summertime, get them done. So let's dig into the budget, into the actual numbers. And so we tried to keep this slide as clear as can be, and I will try to explain the differences. And I think that's the key. You know, as we move through budgets, there's status quo, but then when there's changes, it seems to be appropriate to highlight what those changes are. And so the first column, under administration, you see a change of about $1,008,000. And I will tell you, there's three components that's driving that change, that increase. First would be the cost of staffing with benefits and salaries. It is a status quo staffing this year. I'll get to that. That's an additional slide. But there is some additional costs due to benefits and salaries. There are some additional costs due to overhead charges from the county level. And then there's also an increase in expenditures through our CSAs, and that's driven by the community themselves, the CSA members. Under transportation, you actually see a decrease, a $20 million decrease in budget. Now, remember, these are budgeted items. These aren't actuals yet. So in transportation, we're trying to take a more accurate direction with our budget in transportation. So that decrease of $20 million is primarily due to storm damage projects, and we're trying to budget the maximum local match that we have available. And so we don't want to budget more than we can match. It doesn't mean that we're doing less work. I would actually say that we're proposing to do more work this year than what we've been able to in the past because we brought on more consultants and we're getting more streamlined internally with delivering projects. So just because you see a reduction in budget doesn't mean we're doing less work. I would argue that we're probably going to be able to do more work this year. We're just budgeting more accurately to the level of match that we can manage. In the special services column, you see an increase of about $10 million, and this is primarily due to our Freedom Sewer Project. This is a pipeline rehab project, the one I mentioned earlier where we had a $4.5 million grant and about a $4.5 million loan. So that's driving that number. The overall department total, when you add them all up, is about a reduction of about $8.5 million. This slide just shows the status of our staffing for the year. It is a status quo. We are not proposing to add any staff members, and so we're holding to our existing staffing level. So no change from fiscal year 1819. So here is our second year of the budget. This is a two-year budget, the 2020-2021. I will just briefly comment on some of these changes. And so when we look at administration, and there's a reduction in budget, this is really primarily due to CSAs. And so CSAs drove some of the budget up this year, and next year, we've budgeted them back to almost like a zero point because we don't have their numbers yet. And so I suspect that as we close through the 2020-2021, that some of those numbers may change. But at this point, our best guess is to reduce their budget based upon the current year. Under transportation, the reduction in 2021 is due to completed projects. And so we have a number of bridges that are proposed to be completed and resurfacing projects to be completed, so a reduction for that category. In special services, the driving force here, again, is the Freedom Project. We will have it budgeted and possibly complete, but if not, we'll roll it forward, and you'll see that reflected in the update for the next year's budget. Also, the fixed asset budget is down a bit in special services because of the budgeting purpose there. So that's the 2021 proposed budget. So next, I will cover our operational plan highlights, and this is what you've heard a lot from all the other departments about the countywide strategic plan and how we propose to operationalize that plan. For Public Works, we actually have 19...
Let me just say, that photo, I've never seen a more beautiful treatment paused in my entire life.
Isn't that great? I agree.
Maybe you should make a book of them.
Yeah, exactly. So for Public Works, we do have 19 objectives. I don't plan to cover them all, but we certainly could talk to them all if you like. In this presentation, I have identified six of them that I'd like to highlight, and so we'll go through those individually. There's actually two slides of these operational highlights. The first one that you see here is under our focus area of reliable transportation. The strategy for this first one is that we will implement timely, quality repairs to increase road resiliency along critical evacuation corridors. Now, all of our objectives are to be completed by June of 2021. We held consistent with the two-year timeframe. And so you can see that that first one is an effort to increase our storm damage site repairs. The next two go a bit of hand-in-hand. They're under our focus area of sustainable environment. The strategy for both of these next two is we will advance policies and programs to protect and promote environmental stewardship and sustainability. The first one is our recycling and solid waste, really focused on organic waste diversion. The second one there is our sewer upgrades, trying to lift the moratorium in the Rodeo Basin. And then the last one on this page is back on our focus area of reliable transportation under the strategy of we will prioritize local road projects based on daily usage and safety to efficiently maintain the county road network. You see that we are targeting 25 miles over the two-year timeframe. We do believe that's a stretch goal. As I mentioned earlier, the Measure D is about six miles a year. We're hopeful that RSTP can make up the balance, most of that balance, but remember, these are stretch goals. So we're shooting for 25, and we hope we get there. We will work hard to get there. So the next operational plan highlights I'd like to bring to your attention. The first one is again under our reliable transportation, under the strategy, we will improve traffic flow to reduce intra-county travel times. Data is really important when looking at roadways and trying to come up with solutions. We haven't had that program in the past, and so this will be a new traffic count program that we are implementing. The second item there is for our Zone 5. This is under the focus area of sustainable environment. The strategy is we will work with partner agencies, private water users, residents, and the agricultural community to sustainably manage water resources to meet human and environmental needs. And as we've talked in the past, Zone 5 with the master plan will lead us into an improved CIP, Capital Improvement Program, will lead us into an impact fee program where development will pay its fair share in a streamlined fashion. So this is a great operational goal, and we're excited about that item. And then the last one is not a part of the county strategic plan, but it's important, and I wanted to highlight it to your board. It is critical to our operations and delivery of services, and this is back on the fleet side of our operations. And I'll mention it again. We have proposed and are planning to put our fleet into its own internal service fund, into a dedicated ISF, and that will create fiscal protections and provide better... into a dedicated ISF, and that will create fiscal protections and provide better focus on equipment needs and operations. So, we're excited about that one. So, even though we have a number of accomplishments and goals going forward, there are always challenges and risks, and so, we'll go through those. To begin with, our storm damage recovery, and you've heard me talk a lot about this, so I don't want to overdo it. But the hot items, of course, are the funding gaps. That $5.7 million, that first bullet, are monies that were actually spent during the 2017 event and that we were not able to secure reimbursement for, so that is a funding gap. You've seen that we have a proposal in the supplemental today, and it's a good proposal. It cures this funding gap, but it's not without pain, of course. And so, thank you for considering that. The second item is a recent loss of federal highways funds. This is due to the time extension from the March 2016 storms. We are working diligently, and with a number of your board members, thank you for your assistance, pushing the federal legislation to stop this risk in the future. But the 2.2 is real, and it is monies that have been lost. And we are working on a plan to implement those critical facilities without federal highway assistance. And then, the third item is a future risk, the $35 million risk of more than 77 projects. We do have a meeting tomorrow with Federal Highways in Sacramento. We're really hoping to get some guidance from Federal Highway staff so that when we submit our time extension, that we could secure a yes versus a no. In addition to our legislative efforts, which are ongoing, I'd like to thank Supervisor Friend for pushing the NACO element with that resolution. Supervisor McPherson for reaching out to a number of his contacts in the legislation to get some attention. There's a number of bills being pushed today to hopefully resolve these risks. But for today, it's still a risk. Secondly, on the page, we have deferred maintenance challenges and risks, and this is ongoing, and it's well-known. The road side of our operation, we have a $240 million deferred maintenance. On culverts, we have a $50 million deferred maintenance. Culverts will be a focus in these coming years to identify how we prioritize those needs. We know the needs are huge, we certainly can't get to them all at once. But if we can prioritize and start chipping away at it, it will protect us in the future. So, that is our plan. And of course, aging equipment and facilities, we've talked a bit about the facilities, or about the equipment, the facilities. All of our facilities, average age is 45 years, so it's time to start investing and planning and looking in that. And I did mention the long-range facilities plan, which will include those facilities. Continuing on with challenges and risks, in our solid waste area, we have a number of challenges coming in the near future. The first one is our transfer station needs. As the landfill becomes full, which we still think has about 10 years of life, and we hope to say that for quite a few more years coming forward by recycling, by diverting, we'd like to keep our landfill open, but we certainly do need to plan and move forward with the new transfer station. We estimate a $15 to $20 million expense. Our number-one location for this new transfer station will be at our Buena Vista landfill. Additionally, our organics facility and organics in general, there is a state legislation that requires us, mandates us, to be in compliance by 2021, which means that we'll be collecting organics from our customers. And to do that, we need to have a facility in place. We are looking at a combined composting organics facility. We're looking at bringing that together, hopefully in the area of the Buena Vista landfill. Our number-one alternative site today is on top of the old landfill. If you've been down there, there's a large area, it looks suitable. So, we are doing conceptual design today. And then, finally, some additional challenges and risks continue in the Davenport area. Due to the size of the community, they still struggle with high rates and needs that they can't necessarily afford. We're hopeful that as new development occurs down in that, or up in that area, that that will support the utilities and the community's utility rates. And then, also drainage continues to be a challenge, a huge risk. Zone 5 is the center point of that. We also are looking at Zone 6, which has similar needs. And so, we're looking at opportunities for additional funding through assessments and impact fees, which would mitigate the new development in those areas. I will move into some opportunities, which is a good way to finish, I would say, instead of leaving you on such a sour note. Some of the highlighted opportunities include flood control. Down in Zone 7, in the Paharo River area, we are looking at a JPA, which would be a great opportunity for us with new finance options. And then, of course, the long-range facilities and campus master planning, making best use of county assets in a planned and programmed way so that we could make the most out of those assets. I mentioned earlier that we did complete the Opportunities and Challenges Study. Your board accepted that study April, this past April. Going forward, the county has proposed about a half a million dollars per year for the next two years to implement this major effort. We do plan to bring a contract to your board in August for your consideration. And then, finally, a great opportunity will be the Rule 20A Utility Undergrounding Program. We think that there's real opportunity here. We currently have a fund balance in that program of about $18 million with PG&E. Historically, we've used it for urban commercial zones. We'd like to see those funds put on to major evacuation corridors where we could get more improvement for less money on these long corridors up in the mountainous areas. So, we're working directly with Caltrans, I mean with PG&E to get that in writing, that we can implement that. And so, we're excited about that opportunity. With that, I will turn to our recommendations. Our recommended action this morning is to consider approval of the 2019-2021 proposed and supplemental budgets for the Department of Public Works as outlined on Pages 281 to 310, and 642 to 648, and Pages 43 to 48 of the supplemental, and to schedule the proposed continuing agreements list items and amendments to the Unified Fee Schedule for final approval on last-day budget hearings, June 25, 2019. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions, Supervisor Leopold?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. And thank you for the work of all the staff who works every day to support the infrastructure of our county. We see during storm periods how the staff rallied to keep roads open. But just regular day-to-day, whenever there's an issue, I know our staff contacts Augie or other members of the road crew, they're there to help the ongoing drainage and culvert work, cleaning and trimming and all that stuff. Makes a huge difference in the day-to-day life of people who travel on our roads, especially on our rural communities. The, you've landed in a position during a terrible time where we have a federal administration who doesn't seem to really want to help California during a disaster. I'm glad to see that this plan to try to backfill the money that we've, that we had to spend but couldn't submit any applications for, and then the money in which we're being denied through the federal highway. It's, I think we have to do it, and we're gonna, I think we're gonna have to put more money into infrastructure over time because I'm unclear that that $35 million disaster that's waiting for us is going to be resolvable. But we don't seem to have an administration who's interested in actually resolving it in any way. That said, when I look at the strategic goal, about 25 miles, in a normal situation, that seems to be a stretch. But in this situation, it seems even more of a stretch because we're borrowing from the funds that we'd be used to do. And if this year, all we're getting done in terms of road resurfacing is a Measure D, and that's about six or seven miles, and even if we get additional half a million dollars from RSTP, I just don't see how we get to 25 in two years. Do you have a sense about that?
Sure. So, the Measure D is accurate. We believe the RSTP could potentially nearly match those mileages of Measure D. And so, the 25 is over two years, so that's 12 miles a year. So, with our six miles, we're halfway there, it is a stretch. But we believe with RSTP funding and us continuing to pursue other funds, we could potentially get to the 12 and a half per year. We know it's a stretch. You know, for instance, this year, we're not going to quite get there, but we have a bigger program scheduled next year for the RSTP funding. And so, we're still optimistic that we can get there. And if we don't get there exactly, we'll be really close.
Great.
And that's mission accomplished in our minds.
Yeah. The restriping, it looks like this is a plan that by 2023, all county roads will be restripped. Does that seem accurate?
That is correct.
That's also, it's an important and often overlooked piece, but as soon as they get restripped, people notice what they were missing. The, I was trying to match up two of the strategic goals. One was Goal 134, which was looking at the congestion in Soquel. And there, it defined the area between Soquel Drive from 41st to Main Street. And then, the bus priority thing on the strategic goal on Number 151, which looks at a much longer piece. Now, part of this seems to me to be synchronization of lights and everything. And I'm just wondering why we aren't looking at these in toto instead of breaking it off into these two pieces.
So, they are relatively independent. So, the first one is really a focus on the signal at Robertson Road and working on the village itself, trying to improve, that's clearly the bottleneck. But the secondary one, working with the synchronization and the signals and working with Metro, you probably know that Metro is working on improving their technology on their buses, their automated vehicle locating, the AVL systems. And we would like to integrate that information with our signal work so that as the buses are coming through the corridor, our signals can actively identify them and try to shave a second here or there. They catch the red and just trying to make more improvements for the transit side of the world. It does two things. It, first of all, clearly would, could reduce congestion by promoting the use of the buses. It also would bring a partner in to secure more funding for that corridor to continue to improve it. So, we'd like to keep them separate because they're really separate initiatives with separate project goals.
Great, thanks for clarifying that, I appreciate it. The Capital Improvement Plan goal to, for compliance with state regulations, that's the first time I ever heard that we had to have a CIP compliant with state regs. I know we've done some work to change, this is item Number 139. And I'm trying to figure out what's deficient in our CIP that doesn't meet state regulations. It's okay, you can phone a friend.
Yeah, I'm a little unfamiliar too with it. I wonder who would be best. Let us get back to you on that one then.
Okay, all right, I'm not trying to stump you, I'm just... On 144 is the one about the Live Oak Parking Program. And I thought that we were trying to have the Live Oak Parking Program reconfigured for next summer, but it says June 2021. And I'm just, it was, is there a reason, is there something I'm not thinking about?
Well, so, fully implemented would be, that would be completely operational. We would have all the details worked out. We are pursuing it today even. In fact, we plan to submit to, through our Planning Department, for the permit in the month of July. But we know that it's going to take time to get the permit, to get everybody on the same page, and then to implement with getting the signage up and to expand the program itself. So, we believe that it will take a bit of time, but you will see that new program in place next year. But it'll take a year to work out the details and the bugs of it.
Great. I was excited to see is one of the strategic goals about the rail trail and Public Works. And I know we've, there's been some grant funding to get design work done on Segment 9, and I'm wondering if you could get sense of what might happen on that segment by June 2021? That's the Seabright to 17th Avenue.
Right, so Segment 9 is mostly under the city's jurisdiction, and then the tail end of it is in the unincorporated area. I don't know that I have a really great sense, but the goal is that just as the city has implemented Segment 7 and they continue to move our direction, the plan is that we will follow in right behind them with our environmental work, our full design, and hopefully it gets implemented on a similar schedule.
Okay, yeah, I'd love to keep in contact with you to see how we move that one along. It'll be-
Sounds great.
It's going to be great when it's ready and done. The last one I wanted to ask about is more of a larger goal. We have this goal about reducing waste and encouraging recycling. And then, I think about our recent actions to close the CRV or the, what do we call those?
CRV.
The CRV. Locations in the San Lorenzo Valley. And I'm trying to think, what are we doing to meet that goal? There's something general about plastic pollutions, and I want to recognize Tim Goncharoff for helping us strategize on some ideas. But I'm a little worried about what you've shared with us about the challenges of recycling, how we're going to actually make this all happen.
So, we know that our best opportunity for recycling is as a larger unit through green waste is a really great option. As we can, if we can collect it at, say, through the transfer station in Buena Vista landfill, we have a greater chance of doing more recycling through our waste hauler. They have the best connections in that area. And so, to speak to the CRV, that wasn't getting us where we needed to go, and it had a cost. So, it was a subsidized cost, it didn't really get us to the recycling goals that we needed to. In terms of the greater picture, you know, that's getting more to the, you know, the organics and composting facility. That will lead us to less waste in our landfills. Currently, the organics are primarily going to the landfill. And so, improving those streams will better our program as well.
Yeah, I think when we talk about a goal that says we will pursue policies and programs to encourage recycling and waste reduction, you know, we have to figure out how we encourage that recycling. We're sending some mixed messages. And I'm just, for us to be thinking strategically about what, how we share with the public what we want them to do, right?
Right.
We said we want them to recycle everything, and now there are jurisdictions who are saying, "Don't recycle that plastic, don't recycle this plastic." And so, it's not as simple as it was in the past. It's going to require us to be much more sophisticated in order to get people to continue to do work. And then, we're going to have, as the Board of Supervisors may need to enact policies that reduced waste on the front end, rather than having it come through the waste stream as we do now.
We agree, and thank you for your comment.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for all the efforts that you and the Public Works Department take. I know when we call with some emergencies, you write on it as quickly as you can be. And it's difficult to see with the magnitude of the damage we've had in our roads that people, or many of our citizens just say, "I need it fixed now or yesterday." And I think when you explain the magnitude, again, to you, that word of our damages and the question marks we have in the reimbursement from the federal government, they understand it better. But thank heavens to the voters who approved Measure D that we're able to do as much as we can at this point. With the, to follow up on the landfill with the organics, and it's a $6 to $8 million cost possibility, and it's, I think it's, is that going to be state-supported? I mean, is this an unfunded mandate of sorts, that cost?
Well, it's my understanding that it's pretty much an unfunded mandate. I can certainly have staff speak to that if you want to hear more details about those opportunities. But for the most part, unfunded mandate.
Okay, that's not unusual, I guess. But, and I really, it happens all the time, unfortunately. But less, to a lesser extent than maybe years past. But the, I really want to say, I really appreciate your targeting the $240 million for culverts and deferred maintenance. I mean, for, along an important stretch like- I mean, for, along an important stretch like Highway Nine, that's really critical, because we have a slip out there, and it's a nightmare, as we know, because there's a cliff on one side and a canyon on the other, for the most part. So, I do appreciate your designating some funding for that. We, on, well, we've talked about the Federal Highway Administration and FEMA and all, and with those reimbursements, and how critical they are. That's another point that we need to make, that we've done this work, and really, we're promised a time extension to get the reimbursement for it, but now they're backtracking on that. So, we'll continue to work on that, I appreciate your support, I'm anxious to hear what your, the response is from the Federal Highway Administration this week. And to follow up on the recycling, there was, the funding of the recycling, the recycling centers, particularly in my district, that saved about $250,000. Was that just part of the budget, or is that spelled out anywhere in particular, that savings, or is it just, hey, we don't have that $250,000 to think about, and we'll just build the budget from here?
Right, so, it's not explicitly spelled out, but I can show, or tell you where those funds are going in general, and so when we talk about the organics and compost facility, we're working on conceptual design, and so we're spending money on that. Additionally, at the Buena Vista landfill, we've had some issues with the flare, and so we are designing and implementing an additional flare to stay in compliance. And so, in general, as we see savings in one area, we also see increased expenses in other areas, and so the money is just being budgeted for those, for example, those two, those two areas.
Okay. On the CRV, and I've gotten some concerns from residents in the San Lorenzo Valley, that they don't have their drop-off sites in Boulder Creek and Felton now, and I know that we have, with the leadership of Supervisor Friend and myself writing a letter to the state, to try to address this issue, to alleviate that concern and cost for merchants. Has there been any, do you know of any action on this? I don't at this point, but I think it'd be something that we should really take a serious look at, to see if the state can help us out, and, well, everybody throughout the state, as a matter of fact, in addressing that issue.
Yes, we're watching it, we're hoping that there's opportunities out there for some of the CRV recyclers that still exist, but there's been a huge reduction in those agencies and those groups, those nonprofits. I think the last number I heard, there was a reduction of over 1,000 of those CRV nonprofit sites in the state have been reduced. There's still a couple in the area, so we're somewhat, maybe glimmer of hope that something still happens, and we're watching the state level as well.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm not passing the blame on the state, or, but I wish, I hope that they can step up. This is an issue, the recycling market just collapsed literally over the last couple of years, and we need to have a better resolution, but it's gonna have to come from the state, I think, and so I'd like to see us continue with that effort.
Okay, will do, thank you.
Thank you.
Sebastian Caput?
How you doing?
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all of you, for what you're trying to do. It seems like, it looked like we were gonna have extra money because of Measure D and all that, but then, of course, we had the highway money, federal highway money. It's, in the presentation, it says 2.2 million, it, I thought it was, the figure was actually about seven or eight million, but is it just one specific area?
So, the 2.2 million is referenced to just the time denial for the March of 2016 storms. The 5.7 is funds that we expended during the 2017 storm event, so you add them together, that's when you get to that seven, eight million dollar mark. And so, they're separate, but then together, that's how you get to the larger number.
Okay, somehow, we're gonna have to make up that 5.5 million, that 5 million though, right, somewhere, not necessarily just your department, but somewhere.
Right, so, as part of the supplemental budget item, we do have a proposed plan, where it's an internal loan and repayment schedule, so we hope we have a solution for that, and that plan includes most of the 2.2, so that we can implement projects this coming year. There's some carryover, the next year, we'll have to, we'll have to figure out which projects can go to construction and how we fund those, but most of it is in that supplemental item that'll solve the 5.7 and most of the $2 million loss.
Okay. And then on the sidewalk, the work that's being done on 152, now Caltrans is, are they paying for some of that, or are we paying for the?
Is that at the?
It's from Wagner to Houlihan on Highway 152.
So, yeah, that is all Caltrans.
It's all Caltrans, so we're okay there.
Right.
All right. And then I guess what I'll ask is too, I'm kinda trying to nudge it forward, the intersection, Houlihan and College and 152, and it kinda keeps getting bumped down the road, so I think we're close to getting there though, but let me, go ahead and explain that.
Sure. So, we are wrapping up the design and the right-of-way needs that we have, construction easements and the such, and so, being shelf-ready, we believe we will compete better for competitive funds, and so we think we're getting closer to realization of that project. I don't believe it would happen this summer, this construction season, we're really targeting next season, because we'll have a fully-designed, fully-implementable, ready-to-list project. So, our target is next year, we still do need to secure the final money for that project.
Okay, and when we say final money, we're short about how much?
It was a million, about a million dollars, just over a million.
But we have a lot of that, right? We're not short.
No, no, we're short the, we're short a million, a little over a million dollars is our short amount. So it's still, but, if we become shelf-ready, we think we can secure those funds, so we're gonna keep working on it. We'll keep you updated as we go.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, we have secured some of that.
So, the total project cost is two and a half?
Yep, around two and a half to three.
Two and a half to three million is the total project cost, so we have secured everything except about a million, a little more than a million.
All right.
Right.
And then, let's see, what do we got? Oh, the landfill. China's putting a lot of pressure on this, they used to take a lot of, you know, a lot of recyclable or even garbage, so how much pressure is that putting on us now, that they're, that they're not taking as much? They're turning back what they used to, they're not turning all of it back, but they're turning back a significant amount.
Well, it's certainly a moving target, and it's a very dynamic market that we're a part of. I would say we're fortunate to have Green Waste as our partner on this, they have access to markets that we certainly wouldn't have, nor would our individual constituents have, so we're fortunate to have them. I do think that pressure from the worldwide market is creating opportunities domestically, so it's hard to say exactly how it's going to work itself out, but I think as challenges occur, opportunities are also created, so we're just gonna keep a close eye on it, and know that Green Waste is doing the best they can do with the resources and connections that they have.
Okay, well, I guess the other would be a little follow-up, and we send over recycled material, and then if it's rejected, I think they have a term for if it's too dirty or too wet, or, I guess we're talking about, you know, if it's not cleaned out somewhat, the recycle, when that comes, does that come directly back to Santa Cruz County, or does it go to some huge junkyard somewhere?
So, it doesn't come back directly to Santa Cruz County, but I was looking for Tim, or maybe Casey, we could talk more about it.
I'm just curious, I've been seeing truckloads coming back.
No, 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 that's not how it would work, but I will add, before Casey speaks to your question, there's always an education piece that is needed, you know, in terms of keeping our recyclables clean, you know, that is a big item, of course, and so we can continue to educate our customers, but in terms of the material that is rejected, I guess, Casey, do you have a thought on that?
Yeah, if it were to come back, Green Waste would take that and have either, try to clean it up and recycle it again, or it would have to go to a landfill.
So, it actually is targeted, and it comes back to Santa Cruz County?
Well, Green Waste may have a broker who loads it in a C container, ships it over to China, they reserve the right to reject that material if it's not cleaned enough, and then it would get sent back, and I'm not sure if Green Waste would actually handle it again, or the broker would take care of that.
It's a little more strict now than it was, though.
Definitely.
Okay. And then I guess, while you're up, too, there seems to be a trend in some places, it goes either way, with natural grass or artificial turf. The natural grass, some people are actually taking out artificial turf, putting that back in, because of injuries and stuff like that on fields, but I'm getting, well, the point I'm getting at is, artificial turf does have a shelf life, and what it is, what it has to be removed, and I'm talking about football fields, soccer fields, and parks, if we have too much of that, that ends up going to the landfill, right?
Correct, there's no, I'm not aware of any way to recycle that, other than to reuse it, and once it gets worn out, I know they do have to replace the sections.
Yeah, I'm trying to be a little more preventative, when people are pushing in all these parks, not just here, but in different areas, if we get too much of it, and then it all wears out at a certain time, then we're gonna have a problem on the landfill, that would, that would, it says the shelf life of our landfill is about 10 years, and, you know, if you get a lot of this stuff coming in, that could shorten it.
Correct.
Correct, right. And are we looking at buying land around the landfill close by, so we don't have to actually move it to some other part of the county?
So, in terms of the transfer station and the organics composting facility, we're trying to keep it on the landfill site itself, on Buena Vista itself, and not have to pursue acquisition of other lands. We've got a number of alternatives of reusing some of the space, I mentioned earlier, using the top of the old landfill, which is a nice, flat, level surface, we're looking at conceptual designs to carry the load, to design a foundation system that would work up there for our compost, and I'll mention that the combined compost/organics facility would be undercover, so we could avoid any sort of runoff issues, and so it could be a large, large structure, but it would be on county-owned property, and that's our preference today, is to stay focused on what we own and the assets that we have, and manage those the way, the best way we can.
So, that would add to the 10-year, 10-plus or minus years?
Well, of course, and so, you know, our goal is and has been to keep our landfill open as long as possible. It's a real opportunity when we encounter natural disasters, having our own access, and so if we can divert more material out of the landfill, that 10 years, hopefully, I keep saying that 10 years, for the next number of years, so absolutely, that's the goal.
Yeah, and I think, I think I'm speaking for all of us, when you talk about a new garbage area, none of us really want it in, right in the center of one of our districts, so where it is right now, it'd be good if it could, you know, continue to, you know, be functional.
Yeah, currently, we don't have an alternative that we're even considering in terms of opening a new landfill in Santa Cruz County, that's not one of our options today. The transfer station would allow us to take our material somewhere else, say, maybe Marina or another location, or continue to focus on recycling and composting, we think those would be, those are required and great opportunities.
Yeah, but then, things change so quick, the people in Marina could say, "Hey, we're not gonna take it either," though, you know, that's what I mean.
Sure, absolutely.
When you get that public pressure.
Right.
And the last one is, what I'd really like to see, is the cooperation with flood control, and that's what I call preventative maintenance and preventative work, and if we spend, you know, like $400 million or whatever on a flood control measure for the Paharo River, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's a lot less than if there's a flood, and then FEMA gets involved, and that's all taxpayer money. We're talking about much, much more after a flood happens than if we put in money for, you know, preventing that.
Right. We agree, and we think our current strategy of possibly building it in segments through state subventions will really get us a long ways to implementation with, through the JPA, so, great strategy coming forward.
Maybe I'm simplifying it, but it's federal money that's holed up right now with the Army Corps, and that's probably half or a little more than half of the money we need out of the 400 million, but if we're able to use the other money we get from the state or local, we're able to actually, you know, get things done.
Right, and it'll, we'll get credit on the backside when we do get federal funding in terms of our local match, so it's a win-win, absolutely, we agree. Thank you for your comment.
That's really exciting, because it's a new concept, as far as, we've been waiting for the Army Corps, and this way, we can at least start and get going, and then they can, they can join us later.
Right, exactly.
And, yeah, thank you, and I will do another tour, I've got potholes that I want all of you to see.
Okay, good, thank you.
Sebastian Friend, anything?
I think I'm good.
All right, good. So, let's open it up for public comment. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the board. Thank you, and I appreciate, let me just say, I appreciate you setting stretch goals. You know, I've said, in the context of our operational plans, if we end up meeting every goal, then we didn't do a good job, and so I appreciate that you're willing to push and try to figure out new and creative ways to deliver services, as people have said, even as the feds renege on their obligations to us, we're trying to figure out how to do better for the people of Santa Cruz County.
Thank you. I'll move the recommended actions for the Public Works Department.
So, we got a motion by Leopold, and a second by Friend. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We will now recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow morning, here in Board Chambers, where we will have our last day of budget hearings.